Thank you.
Good morning.
The Prince George's County Planning Board will now come to order. Again, this is our second virtual planning board meeting in order to comply with the governor's orders and the social distancing mandates and to ensure the safety of everyone, our community and our staff and our board and everyone that's involved here, our business community. And so we thank you for your cooperation in this. I have several announcements, but I'm going to wait before the -- and do it before the 10:30 development review items. So I'm going to start with, we have a Parks and Recreation presentation today, the alignment update. So if we can -- no? Oh, with Enterprise Funds? I'm sorry, Mr. Zimmerman. We have before us the Enterprise Funds FY 2027 month financial report, including the projections to June 30th, 2020. We have a very detailed memo. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Zimmerman?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And what I should have done was to ensure that we have -- do a roll call and ensure that we have all of our board members on. So I'm going to start with Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Washington?
Present.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Present and accounted for.
Okay. Commissioner Donner?
Yes, I'm here, but we need everyone else to mute their mics.
Yes.
And we'll all be good.
That was my next announcement, thank you. Please, everyone else mute your mics until you're called upon. Thank you. So we now have, there's no one signed up on this. We have our memo. And please mute your phones, but I do need a motion from the planning board.
Muted.
Muted. No motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, it's just, let me move on. Okay, hello? So that was actually--
This is Commissioner Washington. We're still receiving a lot of playback.
Yes, we are too. So we're trying to figure out if someone's not muted. But this one was just a briefing, so we don't need a motion on that, okay? And I would also say that the Parks Alignment Update was removed from the agenda, item 3C, so that's, we won't deal with that one either. We now have item 3E. Paul Sun and Kristen Mannabell, if necessary. Mr. Sun?
Good morning. Yes, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Is the PowerPoint, do you guys have the PowerPoint available?
Yes. Is that the third, is that MR 1930? 3E. I have 13 and MR 1930.
No, item 3.
Don't have that.
3E.
Don't have that.
Did you receive one for the--
No, I just got 13.
We never got that one?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Who has it now?
So, Mr. Sun, well, we have a hard copy. Mr. Sun, can you go forward?
Yes, sure. Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. I'm here to seek planning board approval for the commission to grant easement to Washington Gas on a Randall Farm maintenance facility located on Ritchie Marlboro Road. Over the past three years, in an effort to provide reliability and reduce operating costs, Department of Parks and Recreation Maintenance and Development Division, which operates Randall Farm, has been converting the existing utility service propane LP tanks to natural gas. In 2017, the first phase was completed with the installation of underground gas lines starting from Ritchie Marlboro Road to serve our greenhouse facilities. We are now seeking to implement the second phase, which will extend the gas line beyond the greenhouse facilities to our horticulture shops, administration buildings, wash rack building, and heavy equipment building. In order to complete this request, Washington Gas is seeking the commission to grant a 10-foot-wide perpetual easement for installation, construction, and future maintenance of the proposed gas line. This, the length of this easement is roughly 1,325 feet. EPR staff has requested planning board approval to granting this easement to Washington Gas. EPR staff acknowledges that a recommendation may be subject to final approval by the full commission. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Can I, Madam Vice Chair? Oh, no. Madam Vice Chair?
Unmute, can you tell she's unmuted?
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Commissioner Washington, any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Donner, any questions?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Geraldo, any questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay.
An approval?
Yes.
No, we could--
We have a motion from Commissioner Geraldo. Is there a second?
Commissioner Washington, second.
Okay, check it out.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Geraldo, seconded by Commissioner Washington. I'm going to do a roll call. Commissioner Washington?
I'm--
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes.
Commissioner Donner?
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay. The I's have it, unanimous. Thank you so very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
3F.
We also have before us item 3F, which is a temporary policy for traffic counts. But I'm going, this, I'm going to ask that we have a motion to continue this until next week. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington.
You continue it to--
Commissioner Geraldo, second.
To continue for one week?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have, is there, Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
Unmute.
Unmute. On my--
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
Yes, approval.
Okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
On my.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
Okay. The I's have it, 5-0. Is item 4 scheduled for 10:30 or 10? No, we actually have a break. We can't, we have a break to resume it at 10:30. We can't take the rest of it until 10:30, it's scheduled, okay? So you have a little bit of time, okay?
It is automatically muted.
Thank you, Dorothy. Dorothy, we hear you, okay?
Sorry.
Okay. So can we put up the sign that we're a 15-minute--
Yes.
Break, okay? For 10-minute break. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your call.
Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Donner? Okay.
During these unprecedented, challenging, and very scary times resulting from the global spread of the novel coronavirus COVID-19, the commission is committed to promoting a healthy environment for our staff, for our community, for all of our employees, for the public, for the eternities, for the applicants, for every citizen, while continuing our business operations. So out of an abundance of caution and adhering to the state of Maryland's directives, the planning board will meet virtually until further notice utilizing online phone and video capabilities. Last week, we successfully launched this new approach to the virtual planning board meetings, and we heard seven cases to help propel the county forward in the area of development review. I would like to remind you of the new participation guidelines. Everyone who wishes to speak must register to speak in advance by now 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the planning board meeting. You can do this at pgplanningboard.org. Again, pgplanningboard.org. You may also submit comments and supporting documentation. Again, all materials must be submitted by 10:00 a.m. before the meeting, the Wednesday before the meeting via email to the planning board office. That email address is PGCPB, Prince George's County Planning Board. That's PGCPB@MNCPPC.org. Participants connecting through a computer, laptop, or desktop, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting via the link provided in the email from the planning board office. Also, you can go to GoToMeeting or install GoToMeeting software to participate in the process. To listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, participants may dial the call-in number provided via email. All participants must mute their phones when not speaking. Please adhere to that. Please mute your phones so that everyone can hear clearly, and we will reduce the amount of feedback. But do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in a room at the same time. To watch meeting lives, the public may continue to watch live via the stream hearings at If you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form by visiting pgplanningboard.org. So while this process may be a bit challenging, we can continue to keep our planning functions moving forward by working together. I must take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you and our staff for your initiative, for your flexibility as we endeavor to move this county forward in our hopefully temporary new normal. And as we do move forward, it is my hope and my prayer that all of us will remain safe, follow guidelines, and stay positive and vigilant. Thank you very much. Now, as always, we begin with a moment of silence. We've had a tremendous loss in Prince George's County and throughout the state and nation, many through the loss of the COVID, the COVID-19 virus. So in the United States, we have over 963,000, 960,000 cases globally, and in the United States, we have 216,722 cases. Globally, we have almost 50,000 deaths, about 49,157, and in the United States, 5,136 so far. In the state of Maryland, we have 1,986 confirmed cases and 31 deaths. In Prince George's County, we have 403 confirmed cases and seven deaths, but the numbers are changing so quickly. We have so many victims, we want to remember each and every one of them in our thoughts and prayers and remember the families. Also, throughout the nation, we have Curly Neal, who performed three decades with the Harlem Globetrotters, the Reverend Joseph Lowery, who at age 98 had been a staunch civil rights leader and a comrade with Dr. Martin Luther King, Tom Coburn, age 72, represented Oklahoma in the United States Senate and House of Representatives, Jimmy the Toy Cannon Winn, the Major League Baseball slugger who played with the Houston Astros, the Dodgers, the Braves, the Brewers, and the Yankees, and then Ellis Marsalis, famed noted jazz musician in New Orleans who may have succumbed to the COVID-19 virus. Also, John David Mandelhoff Hilt, age 44 in Bowie, who was a sergeant first class who died in Iraq. So just, if we could have a moment of silence, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. And forgive me, but that includes any of you in our listening or viewing audience who may have suffered a loss. Our thoughts, our hearts are extended to you as well. I also want to make an announcement that our senior planner, Jonathan Bush, senior planner with the urban design section, is departing the planning department. And Jonathan, if you're listening or if you're watching, we wish you the very, very best in all your future endeavors, and we thank you for your service to the Prince George's County Planning Department and to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. The month of April is Arab American Heritage Month, and we celebrate the contributions of Arab Americans throughout the world, and we celebrate their culture. It is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and these next ones have a direct correlation to the COVID-19 virus as well. It is Emotional Overeating Awareness Month, and while people are staying home, this could happen. It is Alcohol Awareness Month, too. Enough said. Defeat Diabetes Month, and it is also Jazz Appreciation Month, and that may help you offset all those other things. April 2nd is National Peanut Butter and Jelly Day, and as you may not be able to make it to the stores, you might want to think of stocking up one peanut butter and jelly. I do want to take a moment to say happy birthday to, belated birthday to David Warner, whose birthday took place in the intervening weeks since last planning board. He is principal counsel for the planning department and the chairman's office. And yes, and happy belated Census Day. Yesterday, April 1st was National Census Day, and we need everyone, every single person to complete the census questionnaire this month. And you can do so easily by going to my2020census.gov. Again, that's my2020census.gov, or you can phone in. In the 2010 census, we lost $363 million due, in the 2010 census, $363 million due to the undercount. Now, that undercount would have, that $363 million would have helped us particularly in emergencies such that as we're experiencing right now. That money, those federal funds are allocated for hospitals, emergency response, Medicare, Medicaid, veteran support, Head Start, unemployment insurance, crime victim insurance, and again, assistance for disabled veterans, and so much more. We cannot leave that money on the table, so in the midst of this crisis, ensure that you complete your census form because we're going, Prince George's County is going to need this money, the state of Maryland's going to need this money to help us to offset the damage done by this COVID-19 virus. And with that, I'm going to proceed with our--
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. I believe we have a message from one of the commissioners?
Yes. Madam Chair?
Yes? Are you--
Madam Chair?
Having difficulty?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Don-- Oh, okay. This is also a very special day for someone else who's celebrating a birthday. She claims, or folks around her claim, it's the 49th birthday again, but I am sure that Madam Chair, who celebrates a birthday tomorrow, all of the commissioners, all of us in the entire staff, wish you a very happy birthday. And I don't know if you can see my birthday card to you, and if we could get a shot of each commissioner, they have an individual birthday card for you. Enjoy your birthday, Madam Chair.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
4-4. Aw, thank you so very much. That is the sweetest thing, and it's a great way to get my Saturday birthday off to a great start. Thank you all so very much, and you all aren't half-bad with your vocal cords, okay? Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, so you got me discombobulated, but I, it's much appreciated, and I'm going to proceed with our agenda now, if that's all right. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, items 4A and 4B. Now, I think we have a speaker signed up. Yes?
We have some correspondents. She says she can't speak.
Oh.
We have a-- that just came this morning. She just--
Okay, hold on. We have, okay, again, we have the consent agenda, which is item 4A and 4B. I do understand we have a speaker signed up on one item in 4A, which is the, which is the Magruda Point Resolution. Mr. Smith, are you on? Mr. Smith, are you on?
I am, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Mr. Smith, you wish to speak on this resolution?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you and your--
Okay, no, but I just, no, no, Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, I'm not calling on you just yet. I just want to know if you do wish to speak, in which case I pull that out of the consent agenda and will put this on as item 14, if you do wish to speak on the resolution itself. Do you?
Understood.
So that is your request?
I would like to.
Okay, so I'm going to--
Yes.
With the exception of the resolution, with the exception of planning board resolution number 2020-35, which is the resolution for Magruda Point Preliminary Plan 4-18001, I'm going to pull that out and set that in as item 14. With the except, with that being removed, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for the remainder of item 4A and also item 4B? Is there a motion from the board?
Madam Chair, so approval, Commissioner Geraldo.
We have a motion from Commissioner Geraldo. Is there a second?
Commissioner Washington, second.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll call. Everybody else, please mute your phones. Madam Vice Chair?
Unmute. On my.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay. The I's have it, 5-0. I will next go to item 5, which is the mandatory referral, MR 1930F, for Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority. Ms. Osay? Let me make sure, I'm going to go down the list and make sure that everyone who needs to be on is on for this case. Ms. Osay, are you present? Kristina Osay?
I'm present.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chellis, are you on, or do you--
Yes, I'm present.
Mr. Ship?
Here.
Crystal Hancock? Okay, I'm moving on. Shelley Merstick?
Present.
Alan Letterman?
Present.
David Bickle?
Present.
Thank you. And then we'll check on Ms. Hancock later. Okay. Ms. Osay, you may proceed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Christine Osay, planner coordinator of Countywide Planning Division, Special Project Section. I'm presenting on item 5, mandatory referral application 1930F. It's a proposed office building by the Metropolitan Area Transit Authority at the New Calhoun Metro Station. The new building is located on 3.63 acreside of Garden City Drive. It is site is zone MXT and is within the New Calhoun Transit Development Overlay Zone. Next slide. The site is located in Council Street 3, as shown on the map in the central part of the county. Next slide. This is the area shot of the area, which is an entire parcel in red, but the side of the office building is the one with the star, the yellow star. And just for orientation purposes, we have Garden City Drive, south of the start area, and you have John Hampton Howard, which is with 15, that flows into the Garden City Drive. Next slide. The facility map shows the area with the star as well, and you can see the railway tracks, which are south of the project site. Next slide. The site has no regulated environmental features, as shown on this slide. Next slide. The site is within the MXT zone as indicated before with the blue asterisk shown, and the Z字zone is the MXT as indicated before. Next slide. This is the both-side plan. It shows the site, which is with a language of the Womata Headquarters Office.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Osay. I need everyone else to please mute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Ms. Osay, you can--
Continue?
No, you can go ahead.
The side line shows the side highlighted in pink in a rectangular shape showing Womata Proposed Headquarters with the plaza shown at the back of the facility, the building. Next slide. The yellow star shows Apple 7, which is this application, and this rest of some of the applications on the side have been approved by the planning board. Next slide. These are the building materials, which is preliminary, predominantly glass and aluminum. Next slide. Exterior view northwest of the building. Next slide. Exterior park view of the building. Next slide. North exterior view of the building. Next slide. The top view of the building showing the arrows on the street showing the Garden City Parkway and the rear of the building with the plaza. Next slide. The north view of the building. Next slide. The building exterior signage will be placed on the building on both sides of the building, as shown on the slide on the west elevation. Next slide. Building signage on this all elevation as well, the east elevation will be shown on the building. Next slide. South building elevation with height, which none of us can read at this point. Next slide. Building elevation north. Next slide. West elevation. Next slide. East elevation. Next slide. Exterior signage again shown on the west building elevation. Next slide. East building elevation again with signage. Next slide. Circulation plan access to the building. The office building will be on two entrances of Garden City Parkway, as shown. The first one being with existing traffic lights, and the second one shown as a proposed traffic light that will go to the rear of the building and be able to get in and out of the site. Path will be provided at an existing metro garage and an existing shopping package. Next slide. The slide shows the plaza at the back of the building. The buildings that are-- The slide shows the plaza at the back of the building, the building, the rectangular building with a white rectangle inside embedded in, with a plaza at the back. Next slide. This is, this view shows the plaza, which is a nice open area where employees can be outside during the day, as you see on the slide. Next slide. There are six recommendations for these applications, and mainly to enhance and do , uh, basic changes to just highlight the building features on the outside from our open design section. Uh, the proposed building is consistent with the two thousand fourteen, uh, plan twenty thirty-five Prince George's County, and also with the new housing two thousand ten approved Transit Overlay Zone. The application has been reviewed for conformance to the planning board's adopted uniform standards for managerial role, as set forth in the staff report. Staff recommends that the planning board adopt the staff comments and transmit them to the applicant. This concludes staff presentation. And I'm available for some questions?
Thank you, um, thank you, Ms. Osay. Let me see if the board has any questions of you. Uh, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Uh, just one question, was there any consideration, Ms. Osay, for, uh, Womata to put a capital bike share by its building?
It's a, it's a, um, the, what, the re, the, the six recommendation have an area for bike, that the capital share, I'm trying to go back to the recommendation. Can you go back to the recommendation, Kenny?
It's the third?
Thank you. Yeah, um, yeah, the number three, additional bike rack for the building, that it doesn't address the capital bike sharing.
Okay, thank you. I can, I can ask, I can ask, uh.
When we get to the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about that? Um, okay, so with that, Mr. Ship?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
For the record, it's Phil Ship with, uh, O'Malley Mile, here today, behalf of the applicant. Um, I wanted to say at first that we thank Christine and all the staff for all their help on this. Uh, we've worked together closely. We understand the staff recommendations, we're already starting to work on some of them. Uh, and I did want to update the board that we did a global outreach and civic meeting on February nineteenth, that was coordinated with the help of the council woman's office, this is in, uh, Council Nulahera, this district. And, uh, we had probably three to six civic groups represented at that meeting, and we gave them a complete overview of the project.
Are there questions? Mr. Ship?
Question. Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Geraldo. Mr. Ship, was there any consideration by the applicant to put a capital bike share or, or another share box system, uh, at the facility? I see, I see with the recommendations with the bike racks. But I'm thinking that, given that this area is, is proposed as a, uh, uh, town, town development center, whether or not that would be something that, uh, Womata would be interested in facilitating?
Mr. Geraldo, I, I appreciate the comment, and I think it comes under the, um, intent of these conditions, a number of them deal with bike, um, accommodation. I do know we have, uh, lockers, uh, and shower facilities in the building for employees, and, uh, there'll certainly be bike racks and, and abilities to, um, use bikes within, either onsite or within the garage, but I think your comment, um, well, and we'll report back to Womata on that, uh, as one of the additional recommendations, that should a program evolve? Right now, there's really nowhere in and out, uh, frankly, uh, but as the town center comes along, you're, you're right, uh, and I understand the intent of the recommendation, and we'll certainly convey that to Womata.
Uh, thank you, Mrs.
Good morning, this is Crystal, on the town. Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes.
I apologize. Um, under the previous, under the previous, um, um, case, four dash sixteen oh two three, it mentioned that all of the trail information was included, and unfortunately, I don't have that case right here in front of me.
Ms. Hancock, Ms. Hancock.
The recommendations were.
Ms. Hancock? Ms. Hancock, I, I need for everybody else to turn off their mics while you're speaking. Thank you. Was there anything else, Ms. Hancock?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, there, there was some, I didn't hear all that Ms. Hancock said. Would, would she mind, Ms. Hancock, would you mind repeating that, please? I'm sorry.
Okay, then everyone else, turn off your mics, mute your mics while she's speaking.
Okay, in the previous, sorry, um, Commissioner Geraldo, on the previous case, um, where this was re, where this was reviewed of both trails and, um, bicycles, four dash sixteen oh two three, it mentioned, um, that the, everything for bikes and trails were included in that recommendation, and unfortunately, I can't pull up quickly enough, um, the files that you were referring to, but as I go back and take a look, I can go back and, and see what the recommendations were for both bikes and, uh, trails, um, bikes and.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hancock.
Um, are there any other questions? Okay. Um, okay, does, um, and the board have any questions of Mr. Ship at this time? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Uh, Commissioner Donner?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ship, do you, do you or your experts have anything else to add?
No, we're here for questions, if there's anything else, but, um.
Thank you.
We appreciate everybody's input so far.
Thank you. Um, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, do you guys know that we transmit item to the, uh, Office of the Real Estate Department, Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority?
Thank you, and that was Vice Chair Bailey, okay.
This is Commissioner Geraldo, second act.
Thank you. Under discussion, uh, Mr. Ship, uh, I served on the Womata Board, it seems like timing is everything, because I served on the Womata Board and even chair, and caught the metro at New Carrollton, in order to ride it to DC, with, and New Carrollton was five minutes from my home, and now, we're gonna have it right here in Prince George's County, uh, so my timing was a little off, but I think this will be great. Um, this is a wonderful building, it's a wonderful opportunity, and if I recall, most of the Womata employees actually reside in Prince George's County, and the union was loc, is located in Prince George's County, in Forestville, if I recall. So, um, it's, it's fitting. It's fitting.
Thank you for that, Madam Chair. We, we're really excited about this project. I forgot to mention, um, Womata is actually including ground floor retail, so that building's gonna be activated for the whole community, not just employees.
Wonderful, and New Carrollton is the perfect place. So, um, I don't know if there's any other discussion, but if not, all in favor, I'm gonna do a roll call. Uh, Madam Vice Chair?
About I?
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you so much. Without, without.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, without further ado, we'll go to item six, which is the departure from design standard six six one for Chick-fil-A, um, Brandywine. Let me go down and make sure that I have everyone who has signed up. Tom Severs?
Present.
Sherry Connor?
Present.
Dan Lynch?
Present.
Megan Reiser?
Present.
Tom Masok?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, there's no one that I missed, I don't think, okay. Um, Mr. Severs, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I am Thomas Severs, Senior Planner with Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number six on the agenda is departure from design standards for Chick-fil-A Brandywine, DDS six six one. The subject departure is requested from section four point two of the landscape manual, to permit a low wall and no shade trees within the required landscape strip. Next slide. The site is located in the southern part of Prince George's County, within Planning Area eighty-five A and Council District Nine. Next slide. More specifically, the site is located on the west side of US three oh one Crane Highway, at its intersection with Albert Road. Next slide. The subject site is located in the Commercial Shopping Center CSC Zone. The site is bounded on the north and west by other uses in the CSC Zone, to the south by Albert Road, and to the east by US three oh one. Next slide. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently improved with a Chick-fil-A restaurant. Immediately to the north is an auto parts store, and to the west is a grocery store. To the south, beyond Albert Road, is the car wash, and to the east, across US three oh one, is the Brandywine Crossing Shopping Center. Next slide. The site map shows that the topography on the site is generally level. Next slide. The master planned right-of-way map shows the master planned freeway, known as US three oh one, abutting the site to the east. Next slide.
Yeah.
This view shows the existing Chick-fil-A as having only one drive-through lane and a landscape buffer along Albert Road. Next slide. The applicant proposes to remove the existing landscaping and reduce the landscape buffer to accommodate the second drive-through lane while retaining the existing parking spaces. Next slide. Site plan shows a proposed three-foot-high masonry wall, highlighted in blue. The upper right-hand corner shows a detail of the proposed wall. Pursuant to section four point two C three four of the landscape manual, a four-foot-wide landscape strip with a three-to-four-foot-high masonry wall adjacent to but entirely outside of the landscape strip, and the planting of one shade tree per thirty-five linear feet of frontage is normally required. The applicant is proposing the low wall within the four-foot-wide landscape strip, without any planting, as the basis for this departure. The site improvements proposed by the applicant are for the purpose of improving vehicle operations in and, in and around the site. The low brick wall will provide parking lot screening, and the brick is designed to match the existing building on site. The required findings for approval of the departure have been outlined further in the staff report on pages five and six. Next slide. The landscape plan, as proposed, meets the requirements of section four point three and four point nine of the landscape manual. The details can be found on page four of the staff report. Next slide. Oh, I guess that's it. Uh, the subdivision zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve departure from design standards DDS six six one, Chick-fil-A Brandywine, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Severs. Um, let me see if the board has any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Um, Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Uh, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Okay, we'll turn to Mr. Lynch, on behalf of the applicant.
Good morning, for the record, Dan Lynch of Menhosey, here on behalf of Chick-fil-A. Um, I'd like to begin by thanking staff for working with us on coming up with pollution to a problem that this, um, site is experiencing with cars queuing on an Albert Road. Um, the goal was to create another drive-through lane in order to relieve that situation, and the only way we were able to do that was, uh, first, applying for term compliance, and once that was denied, then we applied for departure. Um, in reviewing the staff report, we agree with the staff's recommendations and proposed conditions, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions, uh, the board has.
Okay. Um, are there any questions of Mr. Lynch at this time? Madam, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Um, I don't think there's anyone who needed to speak. I don't think Ms. Reiser or Mr. Masok had anything to add, do you, either one? Mr. Reiser, Ms. Reiser?
No, ma'am.
Ms., uh, Mr. Masok?
No, ma'am.
In that case, we'll entertain a motion. Um, the motion should be, um, well, I'll entertain a motion, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Washington, and I'm moved that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DDS dash six six one, along with the associated conditions outlined in staff report.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, um, okay, Madam Vice Chair?
About I?
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
About I.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it five zero, thank you very much. We're, we're going to go on to.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item seven, which is a certification of non-conforming use, five one seven six eight dash twenty nineteen, for Crescent Square Apartments. Um, I know, Ms. LaRaca, you have two cases, to the extent that they're, the, the record can be incorporated, uh, we'll do that as well. I'm do, gonna do a roll call, um, I'm actually gonna, I think it's all the same people, so, um, I'm gonna do a roll call for both cases. Eddie Diaz Campbell?
Present.
Jill Cosack?
Present, but I don't need to speak on this.
Okay. Michelle LaRaca?
I'm here.
Megan Reiser?
Present.
Tom Masok?
Present.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Diaz Campbell, you're on.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I am Eddie Diaz Campbell, Senior Planner with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number seven on the agenda is a certification of a non-conforming use for the Crescent Square Apartments at one through seven Parkway Road in Greenbelt. Application CNU dash five one seven six eight dash two thousand nineteen is the first application we have today with that name. The subject project proposes certification for one multifamily building and twenty-four units. Next slide, please. The site is located in the northern part of Prince George's County, within Planning Area six seven and Council District Four. Next slide. More specifically, the site is located on the south side of Parkway Road, west of its intersection with Crescent Road. Next slide. The subject site is located in the multifamily medium-density residential, or R eighteen Zone. To the east of the site is, is the Commercial Shopping Center Zone, CSC. To the south is the R eighteen Zone. To the east is Crescent Road, with the RT Zone beyond. To the north is Parkway Road, with the R eighteen Zone beyond. Next slide, please. The overlay map shows that the site and surrounding area are also in the plant community, or RPC Zone. Next slide. The aerial photograph shows the buildings and surrounding residential and commercial development. To the east of the site are a driveway and parking area. To the south are two multifamily apartment buildings. To the east across the road are townhouses, and to the north across the road are, are additional multifamily buildings. Next slide, please. The site map shows the topography on the site slopes slightly upward towards the north. Next slide. This photo shows a bird's eye view of the site. Next slide. The site plan shows existing conditions on the property. The use is non-conforming because it does not meet the density and parking requirements applicable under the zoning ordinance. The dwellings were built in nineteen thirty-seven, prior to there being any zoning for the property. Use became noncon, the use became non-conforming in nineteen fifty-three, when the first zoning map was adopted for the area, and it has remained non-conforming through the changes made to the zoning ordinance since then. Next slide.
Was it fifty-three or fifty-seven?
Nineteen fifty-three.
Okay, thank you.
This slide shows multifamily buildings in the surrounding area, which have been previously certified as non-conforming for our, for our pending certification. The buildings on these properties exhibit similar design characteristics as the one of the subject property, and require certification for similar reasons. This is because all of them were built in the nineteen thirties by the federal government under a single development plan. Certification of a non-conforming use requires that certain findings be made in accordance with section twenty-seven dash two four four.
with Section 27-244 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant did not submit a valid use and occupancy permit, so certification in this case requires a hearing before the planning board. The applicant did submit documentary evidence intended to show continuity of the use between 1953 and the present. There is no evidence suggesting a lapse in use has occurred. Staff finds that the available records, the federal development of the area prior to zoning, and later non-conforming certification of the surrounding properties are enough to establish that, like its neighbors, the use has legally existed since the date it became non-conforming. The subdivision and zoning staff therefore recommend that the planning board adopt the findings in the technical staff report and certify as non-conforming the multifamily use requesting certification under application CNU-51768-2019 Crescent Square Apartments. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time, Mr. Diaz Campbell? If there are no questions, let me turn to Ms. LaRaca. No, let me see if there's any questions from Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dorner?
No ma'am.
Okay. With that, we'll turn to Ms. LaRaca.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Michelle LaRaca with Myers-Rodell &amp; Rosenbaum for the applicant Crescent Square Apartments, and we have read the staff report, and we accept the findings, conclusions, and the recommendation of approval in accordance with the staff report. So, we would ask for your approval of Agenda Item 7.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. LaRaca? Madam Vice Chair?
Questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorner?
No ma'am.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, in that case, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings and accept the conclusion of staff and approve CNU-51768-2019. This is Commissioner Washington.
This is Commissioner Geraldo. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. I'm gonna do a roll call. Madam Vice Chair? Not roll call, but vote. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. And then, we're gonna go on to item eight, which is also a certification of non-conforming use, 53400-2019 Crescent Square Apartments. I'm going to incorporate the record because, you know, the property was constructed in 1937, and it's the same information, and it became non-conforming use when it came into the regional district, and so we'll just incorporate the record. Mr. Diaz Campbell?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes. So, this is item number eight, which is also a certification of non-conforming use for the Crescent Square Apartments. This one is at 42-54 Crescent Road in Greenbelt. This is the second application we have today with that name. In this case, the subject project proposes certification for two multifamily buildings totaling 42 units. Next slide, please. The site is, again, located in the northern part of Prince George's County within Planning Area 67 and Council District 4. Next slide, please. This site is located on the south side of Crescent Road, west of its intersection with Gardenway Court. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the multifamily medium-density residential, R18 Zone, and Townhouse RT Zone. To the southwest is land in the open space, or OS Zone. To the southeast is the RT Zone as well as more OS Zone space. To the northeast is Gardenway Court with the RT Zone and OS Zone beyond. To the northwest are Crescent Road and Centeway Road with Commercial Shopping Center Zone beyond. Next slide, please. The properties are, again, in the Planned Community, or RPC Zone. Next slide, please. The aerial photograph shows the two buildings surrounding open space and surrounding residential and commercial development. To the southwest of the site is open space owned by the city of Greenbelt. On the other side is open space are two previously certified multifamily buildings which mirror the subject property. To the southeast are residential townhouse units as well as another city-owned open space. To the northeast across the road is Gardenway Court, the townhouses and more city-owned open space beyond. Further to the northwest, beyond the road, is the old Greenbelt Commercial Court. Next slide, please. The site map shows that the topography on the site slopes mildly downward toward the north. Next slide, please. This photo shows a bird's-eye view of the site. Next slide, please. The site plan shows existing conditions on the property. The use is non-conforming because it does not meet the density and parking requirements applicable under the zoning ordinance. In addition for this one, multifamily units should not be permitted in the RT Zone. The dwellings were built, again, in 1937, prior to there being any zoning for the property. Again, the use became non-conforming in 1953, when the first zoning map was adopted for the area, and has remained non-conforming through the changes made to the zoning ordinance since then. Next slide, please. This slide, again, shows multifamily buildings in the surrounding area which have been previously certified as non-conforming or pending certification. Buildings on these properties exhibit similar design characteristics as the one on the subject property and require certification for similar reasons. This is because all of them were built in the 1930s by the federal government under a single development plan. Certification of a non-conforming use requires that certain findings be made in accordance with Section 27-244 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant did not submit a valid use and occupancy permit, so certification in this case requires a hearing before the planning board. The applicant did submit documentary evidence intended to show continuity of the use between 1953 and the present. There is no evidence suggesting a lapse in use has occurred. Staff finds that the available records, the federal development of the area prior to zoning, and later non-conforming certification of the surrounding properties are enough to establish that, like its neighbors, the use has legally existed since the date it became non-conforming. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Diaz Campbell? Okay. Thank you. Ms. LaRaca?
According to getting Madam Chair and members of the board, Michelle LaRaca with Myers-Rodell &amp; Rosenbaum for the applicant Crescent Square Apartments, we have read the staff report and accept the findings, conclusions, and recommendation of approval in accordance with the staff report. So, we would ask for your approval of this CNU application, Agenda Item 8.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if the board has any questions for you, Ms. LaRaca, or Mr. Diaz Campbell. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorner?
No ma'am.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, in that case, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Mel Washington, and I move that we adopt the findings and accept the conclusion of staff and approve CNU-53400-2019.
This is Commissioner Geraldo. Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, second by Commissioner Geraldo. All in favor? Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Let me make... Thank you so much. Let me make a couple of announcements here.
Thank you very much, and happy birthday tomorrow, Madam Chair.
It's actually Saturday, 4/4, but thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Let me say this. I have a couple more announcements. Unfortunately, I'm just learning that renowned local artist, he was legendary and a scholar, David Driscoll, also passed away last evening, according to the University of Maryland. Mr. Driscoll attended Howard University and taught at Howard University and the University of Maryland College Park, and he's received countless awards throughout his life. The David C. Driscoll Center at the University of Maryland is obviously named after him, and hope that people will have a chance to mourn and celebrate once it's appropriate to do so. He's received 13 honorary doctoral degrees in art, so I just wanted to announce that. And so, please remember Mr. Driscoll in your thoughts, and his family in your thoughts. Also, I want to announce that we may take breaks periodically as needed, what we will call health breaks. So, we'll do that. And we're also gonna take a lunch break at some point. I'm not sure when. Let's see how far we can go at this point. With that, I'm gonna resume with item nine, which is also a certification of non-conforming use, 26029-2019 ENK International Food Market LLC. Mr. Diaz Campbell?
Let's make sure the...
Present.
Okay. Jill Kosak? I'm just checking in. Jill Kosak, you're on.
Madam Chair, this is Sherri Connor. I'm here for this case.
Okay. Okay, also... Okay, let me change that. Megan Reiser?
Present.
Okay. Tom Masok?
Present.
Abrema Jallo?
Present.
Colleen Jallo?
Present.
Thank you. That concludes the sign-up list for this particular case. Okay. Mr. Diaz Campbell, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, for the record, I am Eddie Diaz Campbell, Senior Planner with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item nine on the agenda is a certification of a non-conforming use for the ENK International Food Market at 9315 and 9317 Livingston Road in Fort Washington. Application CNU-26029-2019 proposes certification for a food or beverage store occupying the ground floor unit at each address. Only one application hasn't filed, but because each of the two addresses has its own permitting history, staff performed a separate analysis through each address and ultimately came to a different recommendation for each. In this presentation, I will first give background on the site as a whole. I will then explain why staff is recommending the board approve certification for the unit at 9317 Livingston Road. Lastly, I'll explain why staff is recommending the board deny certification for the unit at 9315 Livingston Road. Next slide, please. The site is located in the southwestern part of Prince George's County within Planning Area 80 and Council District 8. Next slide, please. More specifically, the site is located on the west side of Livingston Road, approximately 0.3 miles north of Oxon Hill Road. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the Commercial Miscellaneous, or CM Zone. To the north and south of the property are commercial uses in the CM Zone. To the west is an automotive center in the light industrial and open space zones. To the east is Livingston Road, the commercial uses in the commercial shopping center and commercial office zones beyond. Next slide, please. The aerial photograph shows the building in sight as well as the surrounding uses. Next slide, please. The site map shows that the topography on the site is generally flat, though there are steep slopes just off-site. Next slide, please. The master planned right-of-way map shows Livingston Road, a collector road, and Maryland 210, a freeway. No impact to the master planned roadways beyond that existing is proposed with this application. Next slide, please. This photo shows a bird's-eye view of the site. From this point of view, you can see 9315 Livingston Road, which is the right or northern half of the building. You can also see 9317 Livingston Road, which is the left or southern half. The food or beverage store is supposed to occupy the whole ground floor of the building. The second floor of the building is not included in the applicant's proposal. Next slide, please. The site plan shows existing conditions on the property. The use is non-conforming because the grocery store is only permitted in the CM Zone by special exception, and this site has never had a special exception approved. Approval of a special exception requires certain criteria in the zoning ordinance to be met, which this site currently does not. Therefore, the applicant has requested certification of a non-conforming use in order to be able to use the existing building and site design. Next slide, please. The next two slides include photos previously provided by the applicant showing the food or beverage store which was on the property until approximately September 2018, known as CNC Groceries. More than 180 days have elapsed between the closure of CNC Groceries and the present. However, the applicant asserts that they were unable to establish their own business within that 180-day window for reasons beyond their control. Next slide, please. Now that you have some background, I'll go through each address individually. In 1980, permit 4577-80-U was issued for a general store at 9317 Livingston Road. This permitted the establishment of CNC Groceries. No other use and occupancy permits have been issued for this address since then, and the documentary evidence provided by the applicant shows the use continued uninterrupted between 1980 and September 2018. At this address only, the use became non-conforming in 1984, when the property was rezoned from the general commercial, or C2 Zone, to the CM Zone. A food or beverage store is a permitted use in the C2 Zone. Certification of a non-conforming use requires that certain findings be made in accordance with Section 27-244 of the zoning ordinance. Because the applicant cannot submit documentary evidence which demonstrates continuity of the use between September 2018 and the present, a hearing before the planning board is required. Based on the documentation and timeline provided by the applicant, it does appear that the break in continuity was beyond the applicant's control. The documentation also shows that a food or beverage store was legally established at 9317 Livingston Road before the use became non-conforming. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the request for certification of 9317 Livingston Road. The history is different at 9315 Livingston Road. Unlike its neighbor, this address has had several use and occupancy permits issued and several different uses since 1980. However, none of the previous uses before 1984 or the reason any occurred are for a food or beverage store. It was not until 1992, with permit 3489-92-U, that a permit was issued for, and I quote, "tapes, video, movie rental, bakeries, wholesale fish and seafood." Since a food or beverage store is not allowed in 1992, these limited uses may not have been considered to be a food or beverage store when the permit was issued. However, when CNC Groceries closed in 2018, it was operating a full food or beverage store out of 9315 Livingston Road. Based on the documentary evidence, staff has included that the food or beverage store operating at 9315 Livingston Road was never lawfully established. For this reason, staff recommends denial of the request for certification of 9315 Livingston Road. Staff would note that denial of the request for certification at this location will not prevent the applicant from seeking approval of a food or beverage store through the special exception process. In conclusion, the subdivision and zoning staff recommend that the planning board adopt the findings in the technical staff report and partially certify as non-conforming the food or beverage store use requesting certification under application CNU-26029-2019 ENK International Food Market. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz Campbell. Let me see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dorner?
Yeah, just a quick question. So, the difference between the 9315 and the 9317, is that in... I think it's the slide right before that, Slide 10, showing... Are both of those sitting next door, 19315 and 19317, correct?
That's correct. You can see that the... It was considered one building. At one point, there was a party wall between them, and they were considered two buildings. So, the two-story portion you can see in this photo on the left is 9315 Livingston Road, and the one-story portion is 9317 Livingston Road.
Okay, and when was that wall put up between the two of them, did you know?
The wall would have been put up at the time of the building's construction, which was in the 1920s, I believe.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Was that it for you? Commissioner Dorner?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Diaz Campbell? Mr. Diaz Campbell, with these two buildings, is there an access between them within the confines of the building itself? In other words, if I go into nine three one five, can I just walk right into nine three one seven?
That's correct. Because the primary role is taken down eventually.
So, what we're saying then is that we could give the certified nonconforming use to one side of the building, but not the other?
That is what we are saying, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
No further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will now turn to the applicant, Abrema Jalloh.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of this planning board. I hope you and your family are all coping during this health crisis.
Thank you.
Thank you for organizing this hearing. When this process of getting the permit was not going as smooth as I expected, I was advised to get an attorney. I wanted, I wanted to, but unfortunately, unfortunately, I couldn't afford it because I'm currently unemployed with seven dependents. This has not been an easy process, so I would like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Andrea Jackley, the planning director, Ms. Chelsea Merlin and her staff, also Mr. Eddie Campbell, and also the council member Turner, who basically were willing to support by answering my questions and guiding me through this process. I have reached out to other individuals outside parts of planning and have also been, have also assisted, who have also assisted me. Thank you for doing this, everybody. I'll pay it all to my wife.
Okay, so, please be advised that we are in agreement with the recommendation to have building.
Excuse me, please identify yourself for the record, okay? Thank you.
Kalin Jalloh.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. So, in terms of building nine three one five, I'm sorry. So, please be advised that I am in agreement with the recommendation to have building nine three one seven be approved for use and occupancy permit. But in terms of building nine three one five, the staff recommended that building nine three one five be denied for use and occupancy permit due to inconsistency with evidence. I respectfully disagree with that decision. Based on the report, evidence has been provided for the following, and the conditions have also been met. We have provided documentary evidence and sworn affidavit showing commencing date and continuous use. We have also provided justification that the building, non-operation beyond one eighty days, was beyond our control. Now, according to the report, the issue is that the permit issued to building nine three one five indicate various uses which did not include a grocery or retail store. The report also cited that a permit was issued to building nine three one five in nineteen ninety-two for a wholesale meat food market, retail, tapes, videotape, including tapes, videos, and movies. To me, that can be interpreted as a food market, because store, meat, and fish are considered part of a grocery store. I've also submitted yesterday a photo showing that, showing building nine three one seven and nine three one five, they both had groceries in them. Now, the question is not whether the evidence is inconsistent, but whether there is evidence to support that there was a grocery store occupied the entire building. The answer is yes. There is evidence to support that a grocery store occupied the entire building based on the permit issued. There are no other documentary evidence, as the report also cited that fire information was either purged or archived, therefore not available. So, we cannot get additional, beyond this permit that we have, we cannot find any other additional permits. We've reached out to other people that shared with us that they don't, they no longer have those permits. They're either purged, or they send to the archive, and they're unavailable. Now, the building is conjoined. There is evidence to suggest that the building has been operating as one single unit for many years. I believe that if it is all right to operate a grocery store on one side of the building, then it should be all right to put grocery store on the other side, as this would not negatively impact the community or the neighborhood. Now, just bear with me for a second.
Ma'am, I have to ask you a question. I have to ask you a question. When you said it's been operating as a single unit for one time, has that been since?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was that since, what year was that? Since what year?
Ever since they've been operating this unit, it has always been one. It's just that they have different things on different side of the building.
Okay. And then I have another important question for you. I see, I see the permits that came in, and I'm just double checking. I think, I'm confirming with my staff, and I see they're giving me the answer, that it came in prior to twelve noon on yesterday, because as you know, we can only consider evidence that came in prior to twelve noon on yesterday. But I see our, I have our deputy planning director here with me confirming that this did come in at twelve, before twelve noon. Okay, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, and this is just a little bit of background information. So, ten years ago, my husband was diagnosed with A L L, which is acute lymphoblastic leukemia. While he was getting ready to join the police academy, five of those years, he received aggressive treatment. Now, while we were happy that he survived this deadly disease, our lives have not been the same. These medications left him partially disabled. He has limited range of motion in his hands, which means that he's unable to move his hands past his shoulder. Both hips have collapsed, which makes it difficult for him to stand or walk for ten or more minutes. This halted the dream of becoming a police officer. Now, he is limited in what he can do, and so we've decided to start our own business with confidence that we will succeed. We have used up our savings for rent, building, and equipment, in addition to a great deal of time in the pursuit of starting this business. I have mentioned that the process has not been very easy. I thought that since the grocery store occupied the building a few months before I leased it, it would have been an easy process. Unfortunately, I was wrong, but I've learned a lot during this process. I respectfully ask the board to err on the side of the person who has a lot more to lose. That person is me and my husband. So, I respectfully ask for approval to use this building for food and beverage store.
Okay, Ms. Jalloh, Ms. Jalloh, let me, couple of things first. Thank you for your presentation. It's quite eloquent, and you've shared the story of your family's history and the illness that your husband has suffered from, and thwarting his dreams of becoming a police officer. And we, we're sorry to hear that part of it, but we're glad to hear that he survived and is surviving. And that is very moving. It cannot influence our decision here, because we have to make our decisions in conformance with the law. So, I have to, what I will need from our staff and from our attorneys, and then ultimately the board will have to make the final determination, is whether or not the legal, the use was legal when it commenced, number one. And you also address the fact that it has not ceased to operate for more than one hundred and eighty days due to that, you know, well, that it has ceased to operate for a series of more than one hundred and eighty days, but that it was beyond the owner's control. We have too many people talking. There is beyond the owner's control. So, you already passed that part of the one hundred and eighty day test. So, we're in agreement there. So, what we have to figure out now is whether it was legal at the time it commenced. And in, hearing your testimony and reviewing this, it seems debatable to me. Commissioner Geraldo asked the question whether you can go back and forth, it's conjoined, but you can go back and forth internally without exiting either building? And you said the answer is yes to that. And so, what I, and then the question is about that nineteen ninety-two permit for ninety-three fifteen for tapes and videos and things like that. Can I hear the exact language, Mr. Diaz Campbell, of what that permit says? I think we have the exhibit, but it's hard to read.
Yes. Yes, ma'am, Chair. The exact uses that were permitted were tapes, video, movie rental, bakeries, wholesale fish and seafood.
Okay, thank you.
That's the complete list.
Bakery, bakeries, wholesale, okay, Commissioner Geraldo?
I'm sorry, yeah, I just want, so, bakeries were allowed, and fish was allowed?
And seafood.
And seafood, right?
Wholesale fish and seafood, it says.
So, what I would like to hear, from, I guess from our counsel, you know, at times we talk about, we had a case last week, I believe, where we talked about common sense, and I'm looking at this case, and to me, it seems kind of common sense that one built, one side of the store, we can grant the nonconforming use, but the other side, we can't? And on the side that we can't, they're selling groceries anyway, under the permitted use? So, I'm having a hard time understanding why it can't be granted. Maybe counsel could educate me a little more?
Well, it's not that it, let me start off here. It's not that it can't be granted, because ultimately, ultimately, we are the finders of fact here.
Okay.
But we have, we have to do so based on the evidence, and that's why I was trying to elicit some of this information on, so you were right in terms of the fish and the bakeries and the seafood, and you were right in that you could traverse from one building into the other. It seems to be two buildings that sort of operate as one, maybe. So, the applicant has endeavored to make their case. I think, I don't think, you know, Mr. Diaz Campbell can chime in, and then we will need, in fact, need to hear from counsel, and I guess that's Peter Goldsmith this time, but we will need to hear from you, counsel. But it looks like, in my opinion, it's fairly debatable either way. So, I think that we have the ultimate.
Madam, madam?
Yes. Commissioner?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You referenced a document that was submitted yesterday before noon.
Yes.
What was that item?
It's a permit, it's a Prince George's County permit, and I think it was shown, we have, do we have this on, it's not on the, okay, okay, so, anyway, it's a permit that was issued for the other address, for the, for the nine three one five address, Livingston Road address. Anyway, so I guess what, I guess what I'd like to hear again, because it's, you passed the one hundred and eighty day test. The question is, was it, was it legal when it commenced? And that's what seems to be debatable. So, Mr. Diaz Campbell, can you add to that? And then Mr. Goldsmith, can you chime in as well?
So, Madam Chair, part of the difficulty we have here is that we can't know what the intention of the permit granters was in nineteen ninety-two. We know that in nineteen ninety-two, a food and beverage store was not, was not a permitted use in the C M zone, and the property had already become part of the C M zone in nineteen eighty-four. So, it's possible that because the applicants at the time couldn't do a food and beverage store, that they agreed to, that they agreed to a permit which allowed them to do a more limited range of uses that were permitted. The other possibility is simply that the permit was issued in error, but we will, we can, but let's start by assuming that, that it was not. If the, if the owners of the property at the time, C and C Groceries, got their, got their permit for a limited range of new uses and put those in at nine three one five Livingston Road, I would think it's unlikely that they would seek future permit, that they would seek additional permits to simply add additional things being sold on that side of the store over time. I think that is the most likely explanation for why, at the, at the most recent time the C and C was opened in two thousand eighteen, that, I think that is why in two thousand eighteen, you, you see the same groceries, you see the same food and beverage store use on both sides of the store. Just because you have a permit that limits the things you're being sold, doesn't mean that anybody is going to, doesn't mean that anybody's going to stop you from simply moving things from one side of the store to the other.
Madam Chair, this is Sherri Connor, for the record. If I could just add some information to that, those specific uses listed on the permit in nineteen ninety-two, I believe it was?
Yes.
Were permitted uses, and I think this gets that Commissioner Geraldo's question, that the wholesale bakery and the fish and seafood market are separate uses in the use table that are permitted, aside from the use of a food or beverage store. And as Mr. Diaz indicated, Diaz Campbell indicated earlier in his presentation, a food or beverage store which would allow multiple food products to be sold would have required a special exception in nineteen ninety-two. That was not obtained, and so the permit was issued for the uses that would have been allowed without a special exception, and that's the wholesale bakery and fish and seafood market, sale of videotapes, et cetera.
So?
I, I have a, this is Commissioner's question. So then, would it be our position, even if we're denying the ninety-three fifteen in terms of the use of food and beverage store, would we support it if they wanted to do fish and bakery and the other things that's on the permit from nineteen eighty-two? Because it, I'm not sure, I'm not terribly convinced that this is a case that, that we need to outright deny the food and beverage, because it looks like, just on the picture that you've got in the slides right now, that it's going back and forth, and I realize that there are specific things from the permit that are called out in terms of bakeries, wholesale fish and seafood. I don't know if there's that much of a distinction with that wall right open. It doesn't look like it's two separate units to me. It looks like it's operating as one, and it's always been operating as one, and they're just divvying up the kinds of produce or the kinds of items that they have on one side versus the other. So, I'm kind of having, I'm having a little bit of difficulty of understanding why we just have an outright denial versus at least offer up the ability to continue the same kind of activities on, on the ninety-three fifteen side if they wanted to do wholesale fish, bakeries, and those kinds of items as well?
Yes, Sherri Connor, again, they could, in fact, get a permit for those specific uses today, which are still listed as separate uses in the use table permitted in the C M zone.
Well, let me say this, Ms. Connor, Commissioner Dorner seemed to be saying two things. One, he wasn't sure that this wasn't operating as, he's saying it seems as though it was operating as one store, and he's not convinced that the whole thing couldn't operate as one store. But at a But at a minimum, he's saying, why couldn't they go forward with the perm, to get permits for these particular uses that are set forth in the 1992 permit? So he said, so he tossed out two options, as I understand it. Am I correct, Commissioner Dorner?
Yeah, like, on the outside, it looks like they're two separate stores in that picture on the left right now, but when you go back to the prior slide, it looks like that Madam Chair said, that it actually is operating on the inside like it is a single unit. I mean, that's, to me, that direction, the vision in terms of the operation from business, it just seems like they decided to separate what they were putting on one side of the store versus the other.
Yes, I don't, I don't disagree with the photographic evidence provided, and staff does not contest the fact that it may have fact been physically operating as a food or beverage store between the two units entirely. But part of our analysis is establish, you know, establishing that it was legally operating and, and was legally established prior to becoming nonconforming. And the permit evidence put forth shows that permits were issued for everything but a food or beverage store. And after a certain amount of time, a special exception, a special exception would have been required for the food or beverage store. And in fact, after that time, they did proceed to get additional permits, but a special exception was not filed. So the permit was limited to the sales of wholesale bakery, fish and seafood market, videotape sales.
Let me say this, I mean, typically, we know ignorance of the law is no defense, but a lot of people are not, they don't have an attorney, number one. A lot of people don't know about the special exception process, and that is one way to deal with it. It is typically an 18-month process, and it is extraordinarily expensive. So that's one issue, and, and, and not to say that people who absolutely require a special exception don't have to get one, because when, when it's absolutely required, you do have to get a special exception. But in this case, it seems to me it's fairly debatable.
Madam Chair, and I just, I just wanted to add that the, the market is in, in my neighborhood in Fort Washington. I pass by it frequently. And since I've been living here since, in 2000, I've always known it as a grocery store, and have, in fact, been in the grocery store. So I'm, I kind of agree with you, it's kind of debatable. But I would like to hear from our counsel.
Okay, and I'd like to hear from them too. But the question is, that's, you said since 2000. The question is, it became nonconforming in 1984.
I understand.
And the 1992 permit, you know, the applicant has the burden of proving their case, and we, and to us, they may have proved it or not proved it. You know, because in addition to what, what we have in the technical staff report, we now have the testimony of, of the owners. So that, you know, that's helpful too. And Ms. Jallow made a compelling case. And I think what I heard from Mr. Diaz Campbell, it was, it was not in no way do they meet this, but they were unable to, to draw the conclusion that it was legally established prior, it was legally established prior to the date it became nonconforming. And, and, and so that sounds to me like they wrestled with it. But I'd like to turn to our counsel too. Mr. Goldsmith, are you on?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Peter Goldsmith, Senior Counsel, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you tell us what our parameters are and, and what findings we would have, and the findings we would have to make? If we disagreed with this?
I caught, I caught part of that. I think what you said was, explain what nonconforming use did and what findings you have to make?
No, I mean, I want, what our planning board parameters are in, in this matter, because to me, it seems fairly debatable, but I'm, we're turning to you to, you know, to, to guide us as the finders of fact in this particular matter. And, and if we, and if we have the flex, if we support the staff recommendation, you know, it's that we can approve the recommendation as set forth in the staff report. If we do not support the staff recommendation because we are, we interpret the evidence differently, as enhanced by Ms. Jallow's testimony as well, then we would need different findings that, that it was legal when commenced and that it was used as one store. So I'm returning to you for guidance into, as to what our legal parameters are.
Okay, I think, I think the first thing that we need to determine is whether the use as a food and beverage store was legal at the time it, the, the food and beverage store became nonconforming. And I think what, what staff has determined here is that the food and beverage store was in existence prior to, or at least with respect to 9317, the, the single-story building, that it was in existence before it became nonconforming in 1984, and it continues up until the applicant, or up until the, the, the current owner owned the building, and the applicant has continued to pursue, and the applicant, the lefty, has began, started to pursue reopening the food and beverage store. As for the 9315, we, we are talking about the 1992 permit. Now, I'm looking at how that store was used in 1982. According to Mr. Diaz Campbell's outline, it says it was used, there was a permit issued as an office. And so the way I understand what staff is saying, what, what staff, what staff's position is, is that it was an office at the time.
Peter, if I may interrupt?
Yep.
The, the use as an office was, the use as an office was permitted in 1982. It was, and it was, remained an office until 1990, when it became Electrical Repair Services. Then it was in 1992 that the tapes, video, movie rental, bakeries, and, and fish were
Right, so then, so in 1992, we're saying that if they, what, a, that it's tapes, video, movie rental, bakeries, wholesale fish and seafood, and that, and, and Mr. Diaz Campbell, you said that that, that is a separate, or, I mean, Ms. Connor mentioned that this is a separate use in the use table from a food and beverage store, right?
That's correct. So if a food and beverage store is our, each of those uses were listed in the use table separately at the time?
Right, so if a food and beverage store were, had opened in 1992, then it would have needed a special exception. And if it had opened up without one, it would have been an unlawful nonconforming use, right?
That's correct. If a permit hadn't been issued for a food or beverage store specifically in 1992, and they did not have a special exception, then the use would have been unlawful, and the permit issued in error.
Okay. Also, we have, we have with us our Acting Deputy Planning Director, Derek Village, and I'm going to turn to you as well.
Madam Chair, it might be useful for the board to focus on what we staff believes is, is the critical issue here, and that is, was there or was there not a food or beverage store operating at 9315 prior to 1984, when the CM zone attached? And based on all that the board has just heard, there is some evidence that it was, there's some evidence that it wasn't. The evidence that it was includes the testimony of Ms. Jallow. The evidence that there was not a food and beverage store includes the issuance of several use and occupancy permits which indicate other uses, although use and occupancy permits don't always include everything that is happening on the premises. It's quite common that they single out certain uses. And so as, as the chair said, the, the evidence is a question, whether it was or was not a food or grocery store prior to 1984 is a question of fact that the board needs to decide, having heard all the evidence that it has heard. But that really is your question, is do you believe there's enough evidence that there was a food or beverage store operation in 9315 prior to 1984? Or do you believe, no, that only happened later, in which case you would want to go with the staff recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Village, and that helps a lot because we, we have the staff recommendation, and I reiterate that they, that Mr. Diaz Campbell did not say definitively that it was not a legal use. He just said they can't, he said that they can't prove that it was a legal use, and, and they didn't have enough evidence to prove that it was a legal use. And the two things you just said, which is the same thing I commented on, Ms. Jallow's testimony, and also the issue of the permits, because we have seen this many, many times with permits issued by the county, that they are, they do not, and nor are they expected to list every single use that is permitted. Very often, they, they highlight some uses and not the whole gamut, and not, and then we find ourselves in this kinds of quandary, which is where we have found ourselves in other instances. So the question finally is up to the board whether it meets it, whether we feel the evidence and the record addresses that threshold question as to whether the use was legal when it commenced. Because that is the test that we're left with now, because the 180-day test has already been addressed. So the trust, the test that we have, the threshold issue that we have to address now is whether it was legal when commenced. And, and that's, that's up to this board as the finder of facts.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. If, if, there's no other questions?
Okay, make your, make your motion.
My motion is that we grant certification of nonconforming use in CNU 26029-2019 and for both 9315 and 9317 Livingston Road in Fort Washington. And the basis is, I believe that, given that Ms. Jallow's testimony, as well as the permit that was issued that said that they could sell seafood and bakery products, I believe that in fact, it's always been operated as a grocery store.
Was that, wait a minute, was that last part, your third rationale, that you believe is always operated as a base of a grocery store? I would.
Right.
Is there a second?
I, this, and I'll second the motion with additional, just clarification that that's, it's not just that we believe that, that was actually written into the specific of occupancy with Department 489-92-U that was issued in August 21st, 1992, specifically for 9315 Livingston Road, with the understanding that not every actual use is always written into the permits. You've heard that in prior cases in the past, even when D-Plays come in here and testify, because they just literally, in the size of the, the space that they have to write down all the uses, they don't have enough, enough space in there. And it seems like the testimony that we've gotten from the owners, as well as all the backup, there's no distinction between this store from sides of 9315 to 9317. It's always been viewed as, as almost just one unit, and there's nothing to, to make us think otherwise in the evidence that's been submitted going back to 1992 for those two places.
So we have a motion in a second. I would add to that, those are two eloquent motion maker and, and secondor, a fact that you could easily traverse inside, from one side to the other, which, which connotes one distinct grocery store. So that would be my additional finding. All in favor of the motion? I'm going to start with Madam Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, can, are you going to entertain discussion before you do the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, more discussion? I'm sorry. Commissioner Washington?
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Washington, I, I absolutely concur with my colleagues, the motion maker, as well as the secondor. I would just ask that we augment the motion to include approval or adopting the findings in support of the approval of CNU for 9317, but not the findings, staff findings, which are outlined to disapprove of 9315, and that staff and counsel ensure that, based on the applicant's testimony, permits issues, issued, as well as the other comments made, ensure that the appropriate findings are incorporated in the resolution.
I accept that.
The secondor?
A motion maker, I accept that.
Secondor?
Yeah, I accept that as well. I think those are helpful clarifications.
Thank you. Okay, so is there any additional discussion? I'm going to start with Madam Vice Chair.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
The ayes have it five zero, congratulations. At this point, I think this was number eight.
That was number nine.
I mean, nine, I'm sorry, number nine. I'm going to take item 10, and then we're going to take, item 10 is a request for a continuance. And I'm going to take that, and then we're going to have to take a 10-minute health break and come back with item 11. Okay? So we have item 10, which is preliminary plan 4-19031 for East Pines. Mr. Diaz Campbell? Or, and Mr. Hatcher, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay, so let's just start with, actually, Mr. Hatcher, why don't you just go forward?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Chris Hatcher with the Law Firm of Blurt, Charlie &amp; Brewer. Here on behalf of the applicant, DGV Apartments LLC, the applicant would like to respectfully request a continuance from this planning board date to May 7th, if possible. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and I'm prepared to request any, respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz Campbell, did you have anything to add to that? And I know our planning board, so hold on, our planning board administrator is looking at that date, because we, you know, obviously, these requests came in before, so presumably we've kind of looked at that, and we have another one for that date too. So, Mr. Diaz Campbell, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I have to add, Madam Chair, is that we concur with the applicant's request.
Okay.
And I agree that CM is a good date.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion from the planning board?
Move a simple, Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington?
Commissioner Washington, move a, okay, Madam Vice Chair, the seconded, seconded to continue this item, 4-19031 East Pines to May 7th, 2020. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye, Madam Vice Chair?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it five zero, thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break, come back at about 12:20, and then we're going to go forward with item 11. We're going to try to keep going as far as we can until, until we break for lunch. Okay, so 10 minutes, thank you. Okay, the Prince George's County Planning Board is back in session. I'm checking, I'm doing a check-in with our board members. Oh, there we got, we got all five board members, okay. Let me do a, a roll call. Madam Vice Chair?
Hey, Ellen, here.
Commissioner Washington? Commissioner Dorner?
I'm here.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I'm here as well.
Okay, wonderful. So we are about to resume. We said we would commence with item 11, which is detailed site plan 19009 West failure east. I'm going to do a check on who's present.
Here.
Sherri Connor?
Actually, ma'am, this is Jill present.
Okay, okay, so, okay, Marva Jo Camp? Marva Jo Camp, we have you, I see you signed up. We have you, I see you signed up, but I don't hear you.
Madam Chair, this is James, I want to get her over right now.
Your what?
If she's not on. This is James, I'll give her, I'll get her on the line right now, if she's not on, I'll check in with her.
Okay. Will you please do that? Okay, Megan Reiser? Katina, Katina, okay, Katina Schuller?
Present.
Glenn Burton?
Present.
We need the counsel for the applicant, so. Let me find out if Ryan McAllister is on the line.
Yes, ma'am, present.
Okay, Scott Taft?
Present, yes.
And Brian Turtin?
Present.
Okay, so, we have everyone, oh, Sean Bruce?
Yes, ma'am.
We have everyone except Ms. Camp.
Kathy Hook.
Oh, Kathy Hook?
Present.
Wonderful, okay. So, that completes my sign-up list, except we don't have Ms. Camp, though. Yes.
This is James, I've got Marva Jo on the line, and she's going, she's actually can hear you, but she can't speak.
Well, she, she needs to be able to speak, so how are we going to address that? Can she phone in on the other number?
Yeah, she's going to try phoning on the other number right now.
Okay. Can we mute me?
Yes. Let me do it.
Except Kathy, we need to be able to hear Marva Jo if she gets through.
Okay, okay.
So, I don't know, mute all interferes with that.
Yeah, yeah, we're muted, we're unmuted for them, they're unmuted, so soon as she comes in, oh, soon as they come in.
Hello? Hello? I'm in on the phone.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Okay, and maybe you can watch us as we're streaming, too, okay?
Yeah, I can see you, and I tried to turn on the mic, it won't let.
Okay, all right, so, we have everybody accounted for, so I'm going to start now with Jeremy Hurlbut.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. For the record, I'm Jeremy Hurlbut, with Urban Design Section. The project before you is detailed site plan DSP 19009, Westphalia East. As a matter of housekeeping, I'd like to advise you additional backup that included, that includes citizen correspondence that was submitted yesterday before noon, has been incorporated into the record and posted online yesterday afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlbut, because we appreciate that, and thank you, Ms. Hook and Ms. Riner, for getting the information in prior to 12:00 noon, as you know, which was the deadline. Thank you so much.
This applicant seeks approval of the construction of 75, or 75 single-family detached and 416 single-family attached, and 164 two-family attached dwelling units. Next slide. The site is located in southern Prince George's County, in planning area of 78, Council District 6. Next slide. Next slide. More specifically, the property is located on the east side of the Westphalia Town Center Development, which is located at the intersection of Maryland 4 and Melwood Road, approximately 800 feet north on Woodyard Road. The property is zone mixed-use transportation oriented, or MXP zone. Next slide. The property is located in the military installation overlay zone. Next slide. The aerial photo illustrates the exist, or illustrated forested property, which has since been graded as part of the conceptual site plan approval, which is allowed in the MXP zone. It shows the property which extends from the existing Westphalia Town Center phase that has been constructed east of historic Melwood Road. Next slide. The site map as well shows the pography that has since been modified so that the site is flat and contains no environmental features. Next slide. A master plan collector road, known as Collector 636, will go along the southern boundary of the property and then traverse north-south through the property. Next slide. The application is within the Westphalia Spectre Plan. Next slide. And is part of the Westphalia Town Center Development, which has previous conceptual site plan approval, preliminary plan, or preliminary plan of subdivision approval that covers this phase of the development. Next slide. The detail, or the site plan shows single-family detached units will be located on the northern, eastern edge of the subject site, and will be separated from existing single-family detached homes and the historic Melwood Road by previously conditioned landscape buffer. Two or two dwelling units will be located on the southern edge and the center of the subject site, and will front on the extension of Presidential Parkway and the central open space. The rest of the site will be occupied by townhouses that will mostly front on common open space and perimeter streets, and will be serviced by rear alleys. Some units will have front-loaded garages, and these units are located on Public Road B, which is the second from the door of the street on this slide, and did not have alleys. The proposed building will, buildings will comply with umbrella architecture, which was approved through a separate DSP. The applicant has indicated that they plan for future amendments to the umbrella architecture for this phase of the development. All units will have garage parking, and on-street parking will be provided throughout the development. Next slide. This slide shows the special purpose detailed site plan that was previously approved that lays out the open space and trails within the Westphalia Town Center. Next slide. This slide shows the streets and pedestrian circulation throughout the development. Next slide. This shows it without the proposed development, with private streets being shown in red and public streets being shown in blue, alleys in yellow, and different-sized trails and streets in gray, green, and other colors. Next slide. The application proposes sidewalks with between four to 10 feet throughout the site, as shown in the green and gray lines here, and hiker-piker trails is also proposed for the sites that range from 10 to 12 feet wide, which are shown in brown. Three master plan trail facilities impact the subject site. These include the side path on C636, which is just to the left of the central green space in the slide, as well as unnamed planned hard surface trail that will connect C36 to the back branch trail and the planned back branch trail, which is shown in brown on the southern end of the property. Next slide. Which will all integrate into the overall of Westphalia Trail System, as shown here in this graphic. Next slide. The slide, this slide shows the seven different street sections to be used within the development. The DSP is designed with a grid of, grided street system with private streets, once again, in this slide shown in purple, alleys in yellow, and public streets in blue, and the public street with the black line through the middle is the master plan collector. Next slide. Previous approval required an additional special buffer along the full length of the historic Melwood Road and the Twin Nose subdivision. The buffer provided, provided meets, is shown here in the TST. Next slide. The applicant provided a graphic demonstrating the requirements of this condition, which shows the minimum required 75-foot deep wide buffer width in average of at least 150 feet in width. Adjacent property owners have expressed their concerns about the adequacy of the buffering provided and the size of the trees proposed. Staff has conditioned changes to the buffer to require larger trees along the perimeter of the site. Urban Design Section recommends the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve the detailed site plan DSP 19009 and type 2 tree conservation plan TCD 2029-12-10 for Westphalia East, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you. Staff is also of the understanding that applicant is in agreement with all the conditions in the finance of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlbut. Let's see if the, if the board has any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
That is fine.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
Madam Chair, just a clarifying question for staff. Mr. Hurlbut, you mentioned some augmented conditions. I just want to verify that they are already incorporated, and it's a question, actually, in the staff report that we have in front of us?
Yes, they are included in the staff report.
Thank you so much.
That was it for you, Commissioner Washington?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Dornar?
Yeah, on slide, I think it's 15, we have the sidewalks and trails exhibit that shows the, I think it's a grid before that, yeah, that one. So, something that I've kind of gotten a little bit more aware of in these more dense developments lately has been the lack of really designated crosswalks, particularly when you're getting from trails to streets and then going from townhomes to more common areas. They're not, they're not always painted on the streets or anything to promote kind of pedestrian safety. Is that going to be part of the plan for this area? Because that's not part of, that wasn't part of the discussion, and I don't think I saw it in the staff report.
Is there a particular place, or just throughout the development?
I would say particularly throughout, it obviously doesn't have to be at every single place within there, but particularly where you have like T-intersections, where roads are coming across, and you've got like a main transitive kind of sidewalk in the residential area, making sure that we have painted crosswalks on the streets would be helpful, because that's not, that's not always happening in the developments around, that affects some veneer developments around the county.
Most public roads are designed in accordance with DPWT standard. In the cases of the private streets that are shown here, crosswalk sections were not specifically provided, but transportation may be able to interpret specifics about that.
Yeah, I think I'm more interested in these kinds of developments, because they're more commonly private streets, and so the requirements are less stringent, and particularly like around like where the trail is, access is at, just maybe show that we have sort of visibility, so that where people aren't getting hit by cars as they're coming on and off the trails, or that are kind of looping around the curves.
Understood.
Okay, are there any, Commissioner Geraldo? Was that it for you, Commissioner Dornar?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm now going to turn to Marva Jo Camp.
Well, I guess it's good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. I wanted to start by adding my well wishes to our chairperson for your upcoming birthday, and I also wanted to report that I have completed my census form and to commend the commission for all the work it's doing to make sure that everyone fills out their forms. And with that, I'll begin. I would like to thank the staff as always for being so responsive in moving this process forward as a result, as a result of the interaction. I am pleased, as Mr. Hurlbut said, that the applicant is in agreement with all conditions contained in the staff report. I did also want to note to one of the questions that we will be showing, the designated cross sections on our paving plan. I did, if you would indulge me, want to make a couple of statements regarding our interaction with the community, because I think it has come up both verbally and in the context of a letter that was submitted to the planning board. As you know, the Westphalia community is very engaged in ensuring that the development one, that is one that we can be proud of. We sincerely appreciate the time that they have taken to share their views, and have had the opportunity to meet with the community members and the advisory committee on multiple occasions. Our last meeting was held on February 26th with the Melwood Civic Association. On each occasion, we have sought to address any issues that were raised. We've also been partners in an effort to ensure that any inspections of the development, including those by planning staff, DEPI, and MDE, were done in a timely fashion in order to ensure that the applicant remained in compliance with all processes, conditions, regulations. In addition, we have responded to staff and community comments and have beyond, gone beyond what is typically required by the county for similar residential developments in the surrounding vicinity. We are providing evergreen plantings and native understory metal mix that will establish a diss vegetated buffer. The buffer will provide screening and visual separation to the existing adjacent property owners. I also want to respond specifically to a couple of comments that were made to us by the community. One was that, that I have represented to, have offered to pay money for a grading easement. I wanted to clarify that. We did reach out to the community, one of the members in the Twin Nose community, and we requested a grading easement on the property in order to eliminate the need for a retaining wall. Also, at the time of that discussion, it was indicated that applicant would be required to replant trees on our property, which we will. No specific proposal was made. It was a courtesy visit well in advance of moving forward, so that the community member was aware of the proposed development and the point where she would have options to respond. During a subsequent phone conversation, we discussed the buffer, and in these discussions about agreements, I made it clear at that time that the buffer that they had requested, which was 200 feet, had not been agreed upon in the hearing, and in fact, as Mr. Hurlbut talked about, the condition was for a minimum of 75 feet and an average of 150 feet, which we have met. We have participated in a lot of meetings. I have been involved in this project from the beginning, so I'm very well versed on what those conditions are proper. The other one that I wanted to speak to is assertion that we have done massive logging activity. This was, our activity on the property was in fact done pursuant to a rough grading permit in accordance with section 27 544D of the code. I would note that this work has been inspected by the state and county to ensure compliance with laws, conditions proper. I would further state specifically, all the work is being done in accordance with previous approvals, including conceptual site plan CSP 070041 and preliminary plan subdivision 48002. I was contacted by the president of the Melwood Civic Association- I was contacted by the president, um, of the Melwood Civic Association to address concerns from several, from several members of the association, or I was told it was several members of the association. I attended along with the applicant engineer. There at that meeting was the president of the association, the, uh, vice president of the association, and one member of the community. I have, that I'm entering into the record, a letter from the president of that civic association, which reads, "As you know, I convened a meeting so that you, attorney for the project, could interact with our civic association. Only three members showed up, myself, the president, the vice president, Ms. Hook." Ms. Hook was the only person who expressed any issues with the project. There was, as a result, as a result, no vote taken on the civic association and on, there was no vote, I'm sorry, no vote taken and the civic association has no position on this project. Um, finally, I wanted to address, uh, issues raised by Ms. Reiner about there not being a preliminary plan of subdivision, which there was. There not being public notice, which there was. Um, the agreement and condition on the two hundred foot buffer, which was actually conditioned at seventy-five feet and average of one fifty, which we complied with. And that we are in conformance with the sector plan, which was adopted after extensive, um, input by the community, staff, and the developers. Uh, I wanted to end by saying again that we have worked very well in this community. We have worked very well with the staff and very appreciative at all of their, um, work in trying to make sure this project moves forward in a way that is, uh, good for the community. And with that, I would respectfully request adoption of agenda item eleven, West Valley East Detail Site Plan, DFP one nine zero zero nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Camp, I have a few questions and I'm going to turn to our board members. But I do, I, I too saw that somebody, someone alleged that there was no preliminary plan. But according to my records, there was a valid preliminary plan of subdivision approved. It was four dash zero eight zero zero two. And the resolution which adopted it was, uh, resolution zero nine zero three, which was adopted on six twenty-five oh nine. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so there was in fact a preliminary plan, uh, approved.
Yes, it was.
And then the rough grading, you said, the rough grading permit, um, the grading that has been taking place there was pursuant to the rough grading permit pursuant to section twenty-seven dash five forty-four D of the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. And also pursuant to, um, the conditions set forth in conceptual site plan zero seven zero four seven and preliminary plan four dash zero zero eight two. Is, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you said then the inspections have taken place by the state and the county?
That's correct.
Okay, so then I, I had a couple of other questions for you. Um, you said that, um, the, the condition for the buffering was it had to be a minimum of seventy-five foot buffer and with an average of a hundred and fifty feet, which you, with your application? Okay, meets, okay. Um, and then the final thing I'd wanted to confirm was that you're saying that there was, that the civic association, the Melwood Civic Association, has not taken a position on this?
They have not. We had the meeting and I have a copy of the email sent to me, which I can forward for the record, from the president of the civic association indicating there was, as a result, no vote taken and the civic association has taken no position.
Okay, so I, I understand that. Okay, thank you. Um, um, no, I'm not going to accept it because of all the evidence had to be submitted earlier, but you've, you've articulated it and, and so that's fine.
Right, I want to confirm this as my response.
No, okay. Um, um, okay. So I just want, those are my questions. Let me see if, uh, some of our other, um, staff. And then Mr. Hulbert, there, there was, uh, an issue raised about someone not being able to be a party of record on this, um, on this detailed site plan. But can I ask you, I'm looking at the staff report, technical staff report now. When, um, obviously notice has to be sent out by the applicant prior to the filing of, of a detailed site plan. And that according to our records here that I have before me, the informational mailing, um, the first informational mailing was sent out on, uh, March twelfth, twenty nineteen. And then there was an acceptance mailing in, in January of twenty twenty. And the date it was actually accepted by the planning board was January twenty-second, twenty twenty. Is that correct, Mr. Hulbert or, or Ms. Camp?
Uh, this is Ms. Coates' back. That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so, so this January twenty-second was the date of acceptance. And that, only then could one become a party of record. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, let me see if, um, anyone else has some questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Um, Commissioner Washington? Okay, um, I'll come back to Commissioner Washington. Okay, Commissioner Duana?
No, ma'am.
Um, Commissioner Geraldo?
No, sorry, you didn't, no.
No, no, ma'am.
Madam Vice, Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Washington. If you were speaking with me, I didn't hear you. It looks like there was a connection or pause. Um, but you addressed most of my questions, uh, but I did have one additional. And I think it's for our staff. Um, one of the letters that came in, um, discussed, uh, one of the citizen letters came in, discussed Mr. Hulbert being assigned to the case. And then there was a meeting convened by Councilman Davis wherein a Ms. Schuler, uh, or purportedly a Ms. Schuler was, uh, or they were told that there would now be a Ms. Schuler appointed to the case. Uh, I'd just like to understand, um, and I think Mr. Hunt is referenced in that. Um, do you all know what I'm referencing? It's, uh, let me, let me pull up the letter.
And, and while you're doing that, Commissioner Washington, Ms. Schuler is on the phone. Obviously, she's, she's been with us, they serve two different roles. But she's on the phone and they can address that for you. But you can pull up where it is, okay?
Okay. And the, uh, letter from, it's of Kathleen Hook, Melwood Road Civic Association.
Okay, um.
Yes, this is Mr. Hulbert. Um, to address that question, I think what Ms. Hook is referencing was before the application was accepted, uh, acting as chief of this individual department, Mr. Hunt and Ms. Ms. Schuler represented the department until the time the application was accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Hulbert.
So, okay. Um, with, um, and I asked Mr. Geraldo too, right? I did, Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions.
Okay, and, and Commissioner Duana, you said no, right?
Right, no questions.
Okay, so that, that takes, okay, so, um, Ms. Camp, um, now you have, um, Mr. McAllister, Mr. Taff, and Mr. Turton here. Are they here for, um, just for questions? And Mr. Bruce, are they here for questions or if, or?
That's it. If there were no questions, then I would be the only one thinking.
Okay, thank you. So let me turn to Ms. Hook, Kathy Hook.
Yes?
Hi, um, please.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you just perfectly. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Okay.
Okay, so you may proceed.
Okay, and I thank you for, uh, hearing me. I am the secretary of the Melwood Road Civic Association, which Ms. Camp neglected to mention. Um, and I have submitted that statement in writing to the, you know, in a timely fashion. And I assume that.
We do have it. We do have it. Thank you. And it was timely.
You do have it and have read it. And I would encourage anyone and everyone to read this statement. But for the purposes of the hearing, I'd like to respond a little bit to some of the things that have been, um, uh, put forward so far in this hearing.
Sure.
One of them initially, uh, you know, one of them is the two hundred foot protective designation that, um, my sister referred to was not about the buffer. That two hundred foot designation was because the stream along our property had, when my mother purchased this property forty years ago, it had already been identified as a protected part of the Chesapeake Bay watershed. We were required to observe that two hundred foot setback from the stream as we located our site for our home, as well as my neighbors did the same. There was, the two hundred foot setback is something that was already in place prior to any of this development. And then as we negotiated, our, our previous civic association president negotiated long and hard, primarily with Ms. Camp, to arrive at a buffer agreement that was really focused in, uh, almost exclusively on making sure that that stream would be protected and that we could preserve a small piece of the natural habitat that existed. So the, the negotiations for that buffer agreement, we already presumed that the two hundred foot setback along the opposite side of the stream would be observed. And when we asked for the buffer to average one hundred and fifty feet and not be less than seventy-five feet, it was presuming that the majority of that buffer would be the two hundred foot setback that was already protecting that stream and that the buffer would be contoured along our southern boundary to protect, you know, to, to provide some of that natural habitat that we were looking to protect. So there's no, there's never, you know, so the, the two hundred foot designation has been in place for years on this property. And I can leave my statement into the record, but I presume that you, um, have, um.
We have it here.
Read the statement and then you understand that, you know, that this, so when I became aware of this project a year ago, I went to the county, just not, you know, not in a panic. I went down to the county. I had received this informal proposal from Ms. Camp. It did raise concerns to me and I wanted to address them through the proper channels a year ago. And I met Mr. Hulbert. And as you can read in the statement, he made copies of the information that I had brought at that time. And he was receptive to my concerns. But he assured me that nothing could happen on this project until after a hearing has been held. And repeatedly I tried to become a person of record on this project. I knew the case number that had been assigned to it. I followed it religiously and tried to get information that was pertinent. The reason that we do not know where those prior approvals came from or when they were made was because this project was not being entered into the system, even though, even as work began and the trees were mowed down and the buffer was gone and the, and the entire, the aerial photograph that was just shown in this presentation does not show that this is now a moonscape. There is not a tree left. They have, I have also submitted for, for this hearing, some photographs showing work that has been done even in the last twenty-four hours that have crushed the headwaters of this stream and buried them. And it is very distressing that we were blockaded and unable to get the information about what, how this was being allowed to be done. Mr. Hulbert had assured me that, that nothing could, I, you know, he understood that I was worried, but he assured me that nothing could be done without a hearing. And then when the work began and I filed a three-one-one complaint, I was told that this was a rough grading, that only rough grading could be done under prior approvals and that that regulation had been altered by a text amendment to allow for that work to be done. This is not what I had been told by Mr. Hulbert initially. And when Ms. Johnson set up the meeting for us at the county administration building, that was the first time any of us who live here ever saw a map not showing the stream along our western boundary. No one had said that it was removed from the maps for any reason whatsoever. This is part of the protected Chesapeake Bay watershed. And no one ever, I could not get any information on where those prior approvals came from or when they were made or what conceptual site plan it referred to or what preliminary site plan it referred to because the case number was never being entered into the system time after time after time that I went. And then you can see the, how many times I was told by the planning commission staff, both Mr. Schul, Ms. Mr. Hulbert, Ms. Schulars, Mr. Hunt, I was told repeatedly that this number had not been entered into the system yet. And yet all this work was going on since last October, last fall. And there was not a thing that we could do about it until this hearing.
Ms. Ms., Ms. Hook, let me ask you a couple of questions. And then at some point, we may need our staff to, to address some. But when you say this, this case number was not entered into the system, you mean the case number for this particular site plan, is that it?
I mean the case number for West Valley East, this project, the case number one nine zero zero nine.
Okay, so one nine zero zero nine, not, not this parti, okay. Okay.
That is this case.
Yes, okay, so, so, um, so why would it, when it's not, it wasn't accepted until January twenty-second of twenty twenty?
That's, that's part of my point. I had been aware of this number for a year now, since last year, around this time, at the end of April, at the, during April or the end of April. I became aware of this case number and tried to track it down and tried to become a person of record and tried to get information for my community about what was planned and what was, what was going to be coming up.
So, okay, let me ask you a question because once it's accepted, there was an informational mailing that was, um, sent out, there was a, um, um, informational mailing that was sent out on March twelfth, um, and then a, um, acceptance.
This year.
Yeah, uh, of twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen.
This year.
No, last year, twenty nineteen.
Yes. No, that's not true.
Okay, well, I mean, we.
The informational, an informational mailing was not sent out in March last year. Well.
Well, somebody's going to have to address that.
There was, there was an informational mailing that was sent out in March of this year because this, this, uh, case number was not, I didn't receive, it was February sixth.
Right.
When I received.
Well, that makes, that part, that part makes sense because that was after it was accepted. But by law, they have to send out notice prior to the filing of the case. And so, I can get.
There was no, there was no notice of this. And believe me, if there was, if that was the case, Mr. Hulbert certainly should have told me that a year ago, instead of constantly telling me that I couldn't get even on, on record with the case because it had, although they knew the number, they knew the number and it had been issued.
But it, but it.
I could not get on as a person of record. And they could not give me any, any information about it because it had not been entered into the system yet.
Okay, so.
Until February sixth of this year.
Which makes sense because it wasn't accepted until January twenty-second. However, I need to turn to the applicant, um, to talk about when their informational mailings were sent out. So I need that, that, I'm going to need Ms. Camp to, to address it. Let me, Ms. Camp, I'm going to need you to address that. And then, um, Ms. Hook, I want to make sure that we, you, you can continue if you have other, other concerns. Um, we have your letter, but you can continue. But I want to get your questions on the table before we go on. Okay?
Okay, I, are you asking me to go on? I can't, you were, you were breaking up there.
Yes, I am asking you to, I want to make sure we continue with your questions and, and concerns and, and your testimony before we get folks to start addressing. And also I wanted to know, who was your previous civic association president that negotiated this buffer?
Ms. Mary Joan Robertson.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, you may proceed.
Okay, and the other, another thing that I would like to point out is, so this, we received a notice on February sixth that this, uh, application had finally been entered into the system. And I immediately became a person of record on it. And our civic association president, Bernie Granzo, arranged for a meeting on February twenty-sixth, at which the developer was supposed. 26th at which the developer was supposed to give a presentation of this plan and be available to answer the questions. I, of course, and I did attend that meeting and I am the Secretary of that association. And I did have questions, but I said I would wait until after the presentation to ask them. Ms. Camp said she did not come to give a presentation to anyone. She just came because Bernie said some of the residents had questions and she was agreeing to come and answer questions, but she was not able to answer my questions, one of which was when would the tree buffer be planted, be replanted? You know, the only question that she could answer for me, I mean, they have built retention ponds and underground things here that I have no idea what on earth they are, that are full of boulders that have, that have been dug out, they have crushed the stream, the headwaters of the stream. She, she had no answers for any of that and she even said at that meeting, I said, "You can't possibly think that this is rough grading." And she said, "No, that's fine grading. Fine grading is also allowed under this permit." You know, and, and so she had her, she, who was late to the meeting herself, it was pouring rain that night, nobody could get to the farm because the roads have been closed and three people emailed in to say that they were trying to get there, but they couldn't get there. And finally, her engineer representative from Dewberry arrived. I asked primarily him the questions about the retention ponds and what was being built within the buffer that they had already mown down and they did not answer those questions. And Ms. Camp said, "We will get you answers to these questions within 24 hours," and she has never gotten. She said that she would send them by email and she has not done that to this day.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Hook. I thank you for your testimony and your concerns as well as your letter and I guess this is your sister, Miriam Hook Reiner.
Yes.
Okay, I thank you for your testimony at this point. Can I see if the board has-
Okay, and to make sure that you know this is the distinction, the 200-foot protective area that she referred to is what was already in place prior to any of the development of the West Valley, of the Smith Home Farm Project at all. That was what was already in place along both sides of the stream that runs along our western boundary. The buffer agreement was a separate, separate agreement and that buffer agreement has also been violated, seriously violated, because the understanding was not that they would clearcut every single tree and then replant with seedlings later.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Hook. I'm going to see if our board members have any questions of you at this time, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, I don't have a question at this time, I may come back to that.
Okay, because I'm going to turn to folks to answer some of these questions, but, okay.
Right, yeah, that's my hesitation either. The answers that she raised, I really would like to hear some response.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Washington?
Madam Chair, I'll also defer to staff. I would like to ask Ms. Hook, she keeps referencing the 200-foot buffer agreement.
No.
Well, that's how she rephrases it. I'm asking if, in fact, there is an agreement and if so, has anyone seen it?
Ma'am, there, I, I was trying just now to make the very clear distinction between the 200-foot, which was the original setback along this stream, the original setback from 40 years ago required a 200-foot setback along both sides of this stream, which was identified as part of the Chesapeake Bay watershed. The buffer agreement, the buffer agreement that has, was negotiated between our Civic Association and this developer was a 150-foot average buffer, but at no point to be less than 75 feet wide. And that accommodated the fact that we already understood that there would be a 200, that 200 feet of that buffer would run along the western side of that stream.
Yes, Ms. Hook.
And that the rest of it could be, and that the rest of it could be contoured out as lo, in order to average 150 feet and be at no point less than 75.
Yeah, Ms. Hook, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Washington. Let me make my question clear. I understand the distinction between the 40-year-old agreement, buffer agreement, and the what 's-
But she's saying it's not an agreement, it's not an agreement.
Anything which documents the 200-foot buffer and making this stream as part of the Chesapeake Bay protection area, that's my question.
The plot maps for this property, as well as those of my neighbors, all included that designation.
So it's not an agreement-
And it is not a bu, and it was not, the 200-foot is not a buffer agreement. The 200-foot was a Watershed Protection Act setback. The buffer agreement was reached in 2007 or 8 or 9. It is on record with the county. Ms. Schuler's read directly from that buffer agreement when we met at the County Administration Building after they began clearing this property. And that buffer agreement is not referring to the 200-foot setbacks that we all had to abide by and observe when we built our homes here.
Ms. Hook, forget me for using the inappropriate, an inappropriate description. The 200-foot watershed protection array, whatever it is, I'm saying, is it documented anywhere?
Yes, indeed, it was.
Are you saying-
On all of our prop-
Are you saying it's documented in your plaits, in your final plaits that are recorded? Are you saying it's documented in the final plaits that are recorded?
I'm, yes, I am definitely saying that and we were required to observe that 200-foot setback from the stream when we cited the locations of our homes before they were built.
Okay, so what we'll have to do is find out, because what you're saying is that that's pursuant to the Watershed Protection Act and that it is reflected in the final plaits of you and your neighbors as recorded in the land records and that it was, it was part of the Chesapeake Bay watershed protection. And, and so, and that, that, and that, that is, there's that and then these buffer agreements are separate and apart. And what we have to find out from our staff is, you know, whether that was something that, that this applicant had to abide by or not. Commissioner Washington, you want to go forward with the rest?
I'm being clear on all.
Wait a minute, you're not clear.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for clarifying, that was exactly what was coming.
Okay.
This was Commissioner Washington, and thank you, Madam Chair, for clarifying the question.
Okay.
I have none, I have no more.
Okay, and then we'll get, so then we'll get back to our staff after that. Did I get to the Commissioner Duoner and Commissioner Geraldo? Commissioner Duoner?
No, I don't have any further questions, please, send them south.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Geraldo?
Madam Chair, I don't have any additional questions at this time. I am anxious to hear from staff to understand what exactly transpired from staff's view. Was, thank you.
And then, and we too would like to hear from Mr. Hurlbut, Ms. Schuler's, and maybe Ms. Schuler's, you can address this Watershed Protection Act. We may need counsel and I also would like to hear from Ms. Camp about a couple of things that were raised. One, she said that this is going beyond rough grading, Ms. Hook said it's gone beyond rough grading. She also said that, that you said at the February 26th meeting that you did not come to give a presentation and you couldn't answer questions and if, in fact, you did say that, then what was the purpose of your attending? And so we need you to address that too. And she also said you, said you would give your ans, the questions that you couldn't answer, that you would respond to them and within 24 hours. She said she hasn't gotten the responses yet. So if you could please address those things, then I'd like to hear from Mr. Hurlbut also regarding, I need, I need clarification again regarding the case not being entered into the system. I think I fully understand that the case itself was not accepted until January of 2020 and once it's accepted, only then do we get the parties of record for those cases. Now, with regard to the text amendment, someone could elaborate on the text amendment that Ms. Hook addressed as well. That, I'm, I'm sure there may have been notice about the text amendment, that's something that the council, County Council enacts, not us, so that may have expanded what the applicant could do in this particular case. Then I'd also like to hear from, yeah, Mr. Hurlbut on this, on this business about the case not being entered into the system and all her efforts to address and why she wouldn't have gotten notice on some other matters. So, Ms. Camp, let's go with you first.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm hoping I have all your questions, but if I don't, I'm sure you'll tell me.
Yes, we will.
Let me start with the informational mailing which went out on the 16th and the acceptance affidavit indicating that we had sent both mailings, so we were within the code prescribed timeline for all mailing. That's first.
They went out the, wait a minute, went out when? I just need to know.
The 16th for the informational and I'm in my team, if I have it wrong, let me just make sure.
The 16th of what?
The affidavit. Certified acceptance mailings regarding the application for West Valley East were mailed on January 20th, 2020.
Which, which I found interesting if it was accepted January 22nd, but okay, all right, okay. But when, that was acceptance one, but informational one went out when?
It went out on January 16th, informational mailing.
Okay.
2020.
Okay, I'm sorry, my staff report says something different.
Just for DSP 19009, yes.
My staff report suggests a March 2019 mailing.
Right, that's what I'm looking at, that's why I said that earlier.
It's a question for Jeremy.
Mr. Hurlbut?
That is correct and there's copies of the letters in the file that demonstrate that. So the informational mailing happened in March 16th of 2019, the acceptance mailing happened January 16th, 2020.
Okay, I have January, I mean, the informational mailing of March 12th, 2019 and the acceptance was January 22nd, 2020.
That's what I have as well, Madam Chair, that's what's in the staff report.
I have the same, yes.
So I don't have the 16th and, and so it looks like the acceptance mailing went out two days before the date it was accepted. Okay, so let's start there. Okay, and then, and then, but Ms. Camp, if it went out in 19, in 2019, March 12th or March 16th of 2019, why are you saying it went out in 2020, Ms. Camp?
We sent out a subsequent one, I'm checking with the team now. I think that was the second informational mailing, I'm just double checking, so give me a second.
Madam Chair, this is Ryan McAllister with Dewberry. I was the signatory on the affidavits. I think the discrepancy is that on the formal acceptance mailing letter, it listed as an informational mailing. The affidavit is for the formal acceptance, the content of the letter is for formal acceptance, but since the informational mailing was sent back in March of 2019, the formal acceptance was then submitted in January of 2020 and yes, the affidavit was signed and submitted two days later.
Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, Ms. Camp, continue on.
Okay, so let me, I don't know if I'm going in right order, Madam Chair, but I'll try.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
With respect to the presentation, I want to mention that for this project, we have had several presentations, including to the West Valley Towns and homeowners association, a presentation that was made at a meeting at the West Valley Community Center for the entire community and additional presentations to the advisory committee. So we have made several presentations with respect to our project. The impetus for the meeting in February, I was contacted by the President of the Melwood Road Civic Association, who said to me, based on conversations, and let me go back, I've had several conversations with Ms. Hook, who was at the presentation that, that we had at the West Valley Community Center. She was very upset and did not like the presentation that we made. She continues to say, not that it was a 200 buffer that was part of her flat, but a 200 buffer that we had agreed to and that her former Civic Associate President said that that was an agreement. Having been a part of that, I know that it was never an agreement to do a 200-foot buffer for this particular project. So when I attended the meeting, it was at the request of the President, who said to me that there were several members, he had been informed that there were several members of the community that were concerned with the project and that he would like me to come to the community to fill any questions and/or concerns that they might have. And that is the impetus for me attending the meeting. When I arrived, as I mentioned, there were three people, maybe four, the President, the Vice President and Ms. Hook. She, and so there was not a question about presentation, I'm really just hearing this, that there was an expectation of a presentation. And when I proceeded to answer her questions, she was not happy with the answers that I provided. I then asked our engineer to provide more technical answers to her questions, which we did.
Which, which engineer did you, Ms. Camp, which engineer you, did you have with you that day?
Scott Taft-
Okay.
-who attended along with me-
Okay.
-from Dewberry. Okay, the question that we came into was that she said we were grading. I informed her that we had a permit to do the rough grading in advance of the DSP consistent with the code. She was unhappy with the fact that we were doing rough grading. She did not, I did not make any representation that I was going to provide her any additional information because the engineer provided her the information that she requested at that particular meeting.
Ms. Camp, Ms. Camp, let me stop, Ms. Camp, Ms. Camp-
I'm sorry.
Let me stop you for one question because I just want to make sure I'm clear. So you're, you're saying you've had several meetings in the area with the, several associations there, including the Woodmore, I mean, not Woodmore, West Valley Town Center, no.
West Valley.
Yeah, West Valley Town Center, Homeowners Association and Melwood, but that particular day on, on February 26th, I think you said, that you were specifically invited by the President of the association to come, because some people still had concerns and you were coming there to answer questions. So that is, I guess that addresses why Ms. Hook said you didn't come there to give a presentation because you were requested to come there to answer questions. Is that what you-
That's right and I had made presentations-
Before.
-where she was in attendance on other occasions where she raised similar concerns.
Okay.
And so every answer that I gave was unacceptable to her, but I do want to again make the distinction. She continued, even at that meeting, to indicate that there was a, an agreement with this developer to include a 200-foot buffer. I was involved in the project at its inception, I know when it was requested of the former developer and it was not agreed upon and the condition that came out of that negotiation And the condition that came out of that negotiation was, is in the approvals, which says 75-foot minimum and 150-foot average. This is the first time that I am hearing Ms. Hook make reference to the fact that this was not, the 200 was not the condition. She has always said that it was a condition based on, a condition based on our agreement.
Okay, Ms. Camp, Ms. Camp, Ms. Camp, I gotta stop you right, Ms. Camp, I gotta stop you right there for a second. So what she is saying, that these two things are separate and apart from each other. There's the buffer, she's agreeing with the buffer agreement of the 70, minimum of 70-foot up to 150-foot average, huh?
75 and 150.
Right, she's saying, she agrees with that. She's saying that is separate and apart from the 200-foot protective of Chesapeake Bay Watershed Protection Act, 200-foot buffer.
Okay, and as she was talking, Madam Chair, I had asked our team to find her flat. We have found her flat from 1979, and there is no buffer shown. She does have a storm drain easement that's 20 feet that conveys water from our property. Also, the office survey does not have any buffer or any type of easement.
That's my question. I'm trying to find out if there was some sort of legal requirement for the Chesapeake.
Well, we have a flat that shows that there is no buffer shown.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Katina, Madam Chair, and we checked the flats. There is no buffer on the properties adjacent to this site. There's a storm drainage easement, and there's also an egress easement. And right now, there is no data on the adjacent property, because it hasn't been plotted yet. So I'm going to assume, I strongly assume, and I'm almost certain, that it is the 200 feet, if it was there, it's a guidance, because typically, that would be very unusual to put such a buffer on a stream in that location. And that's why we have the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Regulations.
That's what I'm trying to get at, Ms. Schullers.
Now, and the flats for the homeowners, there's those easements I mentioned, and there is no other easements on the adjacent property that's subject to this application.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I wanted to add that we, after Ms. Hook expressed concern, MDE did come out there, we got the rough grading permit.
MDE, excuse me, Ms. Camp, MDE being whom? The Maryland Department of the Environment?
Of the Environment. That came out in response to Ms. Hook's concerns. And when we went to get the permit for the rough grading, we were found to be in compliance fully of all conditions and requirements.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Ryan McAllister from Dewberry Engineers. We did review the flats as well. We concur with Ms. Schuller's analysis of the flats. There's nothing shown that we saw regarding a buffer. There are drainage easements that are recorded, but no buffers.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, Ms., Mr. Hurl, but?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Can you please address again, once again, about the case being accepted on Jan., in January of 2020, and so within two weeks is when the notice went out, accepting Ms. Hook as a party of record. Is that accurate or not accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, and she mentioned something about the text, when she filed a 311 complaint with the county, and they were told that this was permissible pursuant to a text amendment. Can you tell us about the text amendment?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak on that.
Okay, you gotta identify yourself.
This amendment typically does not affect.
This is, this, and for the record, you are?
For the record, this is my team, Schullers. Some years ago, there was an amendment to the zoning code that stated that, you know, a grading permit may be issued as long as it's in conformance with the conceptual site plan. And I recall the very first application that we got for this. And so when that happens, they can, an applicant can go for a permit, but they still have to comply with all the requirements of the grading permit. And it doesn't specifically say rough grading permit, it says a grading permit. So, but in this case, in most cases like this one, we get, we get these for rough grade, we get tree conservation plans for rough grading, because as part of the permit, you still have to have all applicable approvals, which includes the TCP, the stormwater management plan, and as well as the sediment erosion control plan. So this is very common for environmental planning sections to get these applications. They do not go through the development review division, because it doesn't go through an entitlement process. It simply goes directly to a director level approval, which is done by staff. And that's, the same thing goes for the stormwater management and sediment erosion control. Now, as part of that, there is no informational mailing for the tree conservation plan. I cannot say what the process is for sediment erosion control. I do believe there's usually one for stormwater management, but I can't say when they got those approvals and how that informational mailing went out. But this has been common ever since this law was enacted. And we do get these, not on a very frequent basis, but it's definitely not uncommon. And so you often see sites ahead of their detailed site plan, that if it's an MXT zone site and has an approved CSP, they can move forward to go get a grading permit, as long as the grading and the limit of disturbance is consistent with what was approved with the CSP. And we usually evaluate that for performance with tight on tree conservation.
Okay, and then, and I'm told in this particular instance, the county came out and okayed this one? Is that what you said, Ms. Camp?
Yes, we were able to get the permit.
Okay. Okay. Then the other question, the final question I had was with regard to Ms. Hook's statement about that they never got any informational mailing in 2019. Is their association registered with us?
Madam Chair, that might be an issue in this regard. They have a new president. I don't know that Ms. Hook was the secretary, so the former president may have agreed, received it. To my knowledge, they are, and we have submitted to the civic association each time. And I have the list of who we mailed to.
Okay, so the other thing I would say is that very often, when you have a changing of the guard in terms of the president, or who, or the person to whom the notice is sent, when they're typically, or very often when they're no longer in office, and they get the notice of an upcoming hearing, they don't always deal with it. Some are very diligent and will pass it on to the successor, and some are not. So I would always encourage, when an association has an election and has new officers, to please inform our staff so that we can, so that our information is updated and we send the notices to the right address. So that's, that's not.
Madam Chair, I did want to, I just wanted to say, in regards to that, this particular community, because of the attention to this community, the new president has been very good. He's been in contact with them, as with the advisory board, all through this process. So they are very aware of everything that we're doing on this project. And he's been very good about letting the community know.
Okay.
And they are a party of record, and they have been receiving the items.
Okay, let me see, before we go to a motion, let me see if the board has any questions of anyone at this time. Madam Vice Chair.
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Yes?
This is Kathy Hook. I would definitely like to respond to some of those things.
Okay, all right, you have, you have the opportunity for rebuttal, and they have served rebuttal, and then we can conclude, but I'm gonna ask that it be succinct, so that we can move forward. Okay. So we can move forward with the rest of our cases as well.
Should I go?
Yeah, you can go, and then I'll see if the board has any questions, but, okay.
Okay, so Ms. Camp is making representations that are not true. And you can read within my statement exactly what I have asserted.
Okay.
I have not asserted that the buffer was supposed to be 200 feet. I have always referred to it as 150-foot average with a 75-foot minimum. So, one thing that happened in midstream is that this stream that runs along our western border, it's in this subdivision, was marked on maps, even after this west, even after the Smith Home Farm project began. It was not, until the meeting that Ms. Johnson set up for us at the county administration building, that anyone knew that that stream had been removed from the physical maps. I've indicated that in my statement, in my written statement.
You have that, we read that.
And, right, and further, after that, when I talked with Ms. Schullers, she, I, she specifically told me, I asked her how that stream had been removed, on what authority it was removed. She told me that was the decision of the Army Corps of Engineers and the Maryland Department of the Environment. So, as you can see in my statement, I mean, it is just, and she did not, I asked her if I could see the documentation on that, and she declined to provide it for me. She said, I'd have to go track that down for myself.
Okay.
And, which was, of course, you know, impossible to do. And so, the buffer agreement that I have always referred to, I have never referred to it as a 200-foot buffer agreement. The buffer agreement was not going to arrive then, until the middle of the Smith Home Farm project. So I have always, I have never had a misunderstanding about the description of the buffer that was agreed to. My problem is that our intention in negotiating that buffer was to preserve the natural habitat here, the existing natural habitat, and add further protection to the stream itself for the environmental concerns that we have. And so, cutting down every single tree along the stream and removing the stream itself from the physical maps undermines that agreement. So, we could not tell, and were not given the information, on the rough grading permits that were, that were used to issue the permit that was, that the work was done under ultimately, then we were told had been issued under prior approvals, we could not get the information about whether those approvals had been made before or after the buffer agreement was reached with our community. We couldn't get any information as to what CSP it was, or what preliminary plan it was that held these approvals for this work that has already been done, and has continued on to this very day. It is ongoing at this moment. There are dozens of huge bulldozers and steam shovels and track machines out there, working as we speak. And they have crushed the headwaters of this stream and given us no opportunity to see the documentation or anything about this, because they didn't enter it into the system until February of this year. I have been trying to pursue this since before this project began last year. I have been waving my red flags. I stood up at that hearing in June last year to raise my concerns. I have been asking for information to figure out what was going on over here, and have been completely blockaded by this planning commission and the county council.
Okay. Is that it for you, Ms. Hook?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay. I will, I'm going to, Ms. Camp will, I'm gonna see if the board has any questions of anyone. Ms. Camp will have the opportunity to close out. I need Ms. Schullers to respond. I have to say, when, to say that she says, I can't give it to you, you have to get it on your own, sounds, doesn't sound like Ms. Schullers to me, so I'm gonna have her respond. Ms. Schullers?
Hi, Katina Schullers for the record. So, so two things. I want to make clear what I clarified to Ms. Hook about the stream. What I told her was about the history of West Valley, which both Megan and I both worked on, and Megan is here today. I walked the Smith Home Farm site with the Corps and MDE. Megan walked the site with the Corps, Megan walked.
I want you to be, Ms. Schullers, be really clear, when you say the Corps, is Army Corps of Engineers?
Correct.
And the MDE, meaning Maryland Department of the Environment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So when they evaluate, when they do jurisdictional determination, which is evaluating what is regulated, what waters are regulated, they both come together, because what they issue is a joint permit. So for West Valley, and I guess was maybe around 2006 or so, Megan walked this site with the Corps and MDE. And what results of the jurisdictional determination, a map that shows where all the waters of the US are, that the stream was not there. And so I told Ms. Hook, either they missed it, or they determined that it was ephemeral, because they would not show an ephemeral stream on the map. And at that time, at the time, the way that we did our NRI, we only went by what the joint decision was of MDE and the Corps, and that's how.
An NRI being national resource, natural resource inventory?
Yes, I'm sorry, please excuse me.
Okay, that's okay.
And that's since, until 2010, when you know the regulations changed for the NRI, we no longer accept the jurisdictional determinations, because we want all streams shown on the plan, regulated and unregulated. And so that's what I clarified to her, I said, either it was ephemeral, or they missed it. When we went out there to inspect the stream, Chuck, Chuck from Environmental Planning, Snyder, he did determine it was a stream. It was reported to DPO. DPO informed them that they needed to put up sediment erosion controls, which they did, and then it was reported to MDE, and it's in their hands.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification, Ms. Schullers, okay.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Camp, anything you care to add at this point?
No, just as I stated at the beginning of my presentation, that we have followed and are in accordance with all of the conditions and requirements of this project.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Washington? I'll come back to her. Commissioner Donner?
No, I don't have any questions.
No question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to Commissioner Donner. You look like you were gonna say something.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but it seems like there's been some sort of acrimonious, going back and forth kind of behavior. So regardless of what happens in a few minutes, it would be great to know that in the future, the applicant reaches out a little bit more proactively with the citizens, and then, and I think now, the citizens should know that they are gonna be protected records, so they will be getting updates about all the cases going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Geraldo?
Madam Chair, I don't have any comments. I just joined in the comments of Commissioner Donner.
Okay, thank you. Let me see now, there's, Mr. Hurl, but did you have anything else to add, our staff?
None at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Washington, and I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-19009 and TCP-2-029-12-10, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Geraldo.
Okay, I think Ms. Bailey, Commissioner Geraldo was a tad louder, so we'll give it to Commissioner Geraldo at this point. Okay. And then, is there discussion? Well, under discussion, I would echo the sentiments expressed by Commissioner Donner in terms in terms of working towards the future. It does seem, there is some acrimony here, probably due to longstanding, um, back and forth and back and forth, but you still have to work together. So, I would echo the sentiments of Commissioner Dooner, and I would also, um, I thank everyone for the clarifications, and I would also, if, if Ms. Hook says that information is on their, their plats, and, and your experts, Ms. Camp, are saying there that 200-foot setback is, requirement is not on the plat, I think there needs to be greater communication and, so that you all can see, um, and greater sharing of information. And I will also say that there's no way a person could have been a party of record prior to the acceptance of the application, so that, that part I have to be really clear about. Okay, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Madam Vice Chair?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dooner?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, the motion carries 5-0, please continue communication at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the TCP, excuse me.
Madam Chair, the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you done with this item?
Yes.
Uh, this is Derek Verlage, Acting Deputy Planning Director. Just for scheduling purposes, I want to alert you that on item 14, the Magruder Point Resolution, the, the individual who was going to speak is indicating he didn't want to.
Okay, 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 thank you, he doesn't want to, okay.
Is indicating he could not stay on the call.
Madam Chair?
I didn't call this case yet, I'm not ready for it yet.
Madam Chair?
Yes? Who is this? Somebody's calling me.
This, this is Greg.
Okay, thank you, okay. Okay. All right, and what about, okay, I didn't call that case yet, so I'm at one more commons, item 12. Okay. What, are, are you trying to say something now, Mr. Smith?
Uh, I just wanted to indicate that I, I was able to rejoin, so.
Okay, thank you.
I indicated I.
Okay, thank you, so let me proceed, thank you. Item 12?
Yes, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Andrew Bishop with the Urban Design Section, I'll be very brief.
Yes, you know what, you're gonna be so brief, Mr. Bishop, that I'm gonna turn to, who's here on, on behalf of the, um, um, applicant, is it Mr. Gibbs?
Mr. Gibbs, yes.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bishop, I'm gonna turn to Mr. Gibbs for a second to see, to request, because I understand there's a request for a continuance to May 7th?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms., Mr. Gibbs? Are you, I wanna make sure all the people are present, let me start there. So, I have Mr. Bishop, Ms. Kozak?
Yes, ma'am. What is it?
Okay, Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Gibbs? Okay, Katina Schullers? And Tom Masod?
Present.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Noel Smith?
Present.
Okay, Ms. Schullers, I know you're still here.
Yes, I am, but this is gonna be Megan's.
Okay, that's fine, okay, so I'm gonna switch this out to Megan, okay.
Madam Chair, this is Megan Reiser, I am present.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dean, Samuel Dean? Um, Cigrid Samuel? Of Lake Harbor Civic Association? Charles Exum, Wood, Woodstream Church? Larray Benton? LIB Enterprises?
I'm here.
Okay, so, um, I've gone down the list, I've called everyone who said they had intended to start up, to, to sign up for this case. We have a request for a continuance to May 7th, 2020. Um, I don't, um, you know, we have the request, um, I don't know where Mr. Gibbs is at this point in time, but we do have the request. I don't know, the only person who seems present, even though I called the names of Samuel Dean, Cigrid Samuel, Charles Exum, and Larray Benton, the only, uh, I, the only person I heard respond was Larray Benton. Mr. Benton, are you okay with the request for a continuance to May 7th?
No issues with that request, Madam Chair.
Excuse me?
No issues with the request for a continuance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so, with that, is there a motion to continue to May 7th?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Verlage, I move that we, uh.
Okay, I think, I think Commissioner Geraldo beat you to it, okay. Mr. Geraldo?
Uh, I move that, yes, I move that we continue DSP-04067-092.
Okay, I think there's a delay, there's a delay happening. We have a delay happening, we have a motion from Commissioner Geraldo, I'll take your motion, Matt, Commissioner Washington, as a second, is that, okay, would, would you change yours to a second, Commissioner Washington? Commissioner? That's a second, Commissioner Washington?
Thank you, Dooner, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Vice Chair?
Hold on.
I vote aye.
Okay, Commissioner Washington? You were the second.
I vote aye.
Okay. Commissioner Dooner?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I vote aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, thank you. All right, let's go, we're coming down the home stretch. Yes.
Chair. This is Ed Gibbs, can you hear me now?
Yeah, but you're done.
I just, I've been on the whole time, and I'm still responding, but they don't want to hear me.
I, I, I know, I know what it is, Mr. Gibbs, getting used to this technology is, is challenging for some of us.
Okay, I, I see that one coming.
And, and Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Samuel Dean, I tried to call in, somehow we had to work through this mess.
But it, it worked out, I hear you, I hear you, so, and you, you had no problem with the, um, continuance? Okay, we heard you.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you so much, I did hear you earlier. Okay, thank you.
Thank you to everyone, have a nice day.
Thank you.
Good to him, Mr. Gibbs.
And, and thank you, thank you all for that one, because we sent out notice to the attorneys, we sent out notice to everybody, we posted it all at the same time, so everybody had their notice of, on how to participate concurrently, thank you. Item 13, planning assist, thank you, be safe, planning assistance to municipalities and communities, number 13. Ms. Erminger?
Present.
Mr. Sams?
He, yeah.
No, no, Daniel Sams?
No, Dan's in.
Okay.
Dan will not be on this case, it'll be Fred.
Okay, Fred Statura? That's you, that's you, okay, all right, let's go. Is it Ms. Erminger who's presenting? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, let's go.
Good afternoon, members of the board, for the record, my name is Wendy Erminger, and my supervisor, Fred Statura, and I are here from the Neighborhood Revitalization Section, Community Planning Division, to discuss with you two PAMC, Planning Assistance to Municipalities and Communities Program Projects.
Okay, hold on a second, hold on a second, it's not coming up, but we have, we have the presentation. As a matter of fact, you know what? Let me just tell you this. Okay, so we have this wonderful memo to approve two projects requesting financial assistance, we have the Hyattsville Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Trainers fee, and then we have the Chevrolet National Register Historic District nomination, expansion of nomination boundaries, um, the total will be $58,000, and the FY 2020 PAMC budget is $225,000. Does that conclude your presentation? Ms. Erminger?
It does, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you so much, see, I'm, I'm multi-talented, tasking, yes? Madam Vice Chair? Thank you, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Bailey and a second by Commissioner Geraldo, all in favor indicate by saying aye, Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Can you hear me?
You're, and you're on some sort of delay. It's a, it's a delay.
Oh, okay, well, I'm glad we're the home stretch, but I'm, of course, aye.
Okay, but now we hear you loud and clear, so it's, it's like you've come back. Okay, Commissioner Dooner?
Yes, and Commissioner Washington should get on some fiber optics instead of DSL after she's on.
Ooh, okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
I, yeah, fiber optics.
I need a, I need a, a yea or a nay, Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, I, I vote in favor.
Okay. The ayes have it, 5-0, thank you very much, Ms. Erminger and Mr. Futura, uh, Ms. Erminger and Mr. Statura. Yes, Statura. One, one of these days I'm gonna get it right. Okay, now we have item, we have, before us, item 14, which was the Planning Board Resolution 2025-35 for the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision for Magruder Point 4-18001. I do want to tell you, before we commence, I, I know, Mr. Smith, you want to speak, the question before us, we do not change the substance of our vote via the resolution, the resolution just has to reflect the action that we took at, when we adopted, when we approved the Planning Board, um, the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision 4-100, 18001. And so, um, that is the point that I need to make legally, we have to have a resolution that embodies our final decision and our findings and, and conditions. So, I'm going to turn to our legal counsel and to the, um, planning staff and to, to ensure that, because when I read the resolution, it embodies the decision to me, and I'm gonna turn to, um, our staff. I don't know who we have on for our staff for this.
Madam Chair, this is Sherry Connor with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. That is correct, uh, the, the resolution was drafted in accordance with the Planning Board's decision, and this matter was also reviewed by a, a legal office before being placed on the agenda.
Okay, and then I, and, and Mr. Goldsmith, are you present on the, on the call?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Goldsmith, Mr. Gold, okay.
I just want to confirm that legal counsel, no, legal department reviewed every resolution for performance with the motion that was made, and in this case, it was Commissioner Washington, and, uh, we did, being that, we did determine that it was a performance and embodied the motion that was made and the action that was taken by the board, and we did hear that there was going to be, um, someone speaking on this matter, and so just to be careful, we did re-review it again last night and went, um, point, uh, and, and just checked off everything that, um, every part of the motion that was in, that was within Commissioner Washington's motion, um, just to confirm that it was included in the resolution, and we determined that it wasn't.
And, and, and I know this as former counsel to Barham Planning Commission, my question to you is, are we allowed in any way to change anything substantively in a resolution?
No, there, there, uh, there can be no substantive discussion on the application, the, the, um, the board is already, the, the public hearing has already been held, the final decision has been made and rendered, and there's where the record is closed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, you wish to speak? And do we have Mr. Rivera on here as well? Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Greg Smith, rather.
What, what I may say, well, I'll say it maybe outside of the bounds of, of anything you can, you can act on, type of template it is, but I, the research concern that you mailed that they sent to you, um, this morning, um, we had seen that a draft resolution only be, only be digested late before last, and, um, unclear about your thoughts, but I did want to raise something, like a vague concern, and that, one of the critical issues we raised, uh, for the, back to the preliminary point of the subdivision, was, uh, with the air quality.
Can I ask everyone else to turn their mics off? Can I turn, everyone else mute your mics so I can, we can hear properly? Thank you. Mr. Smith?
We're gonna have to get to the next one, forward, he's right there. We, we'll, one of our primary concerns is the testimony before you and more.
No, 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 it can't be on the testimony, it has to be on the resolution, it has to be on the resolution. Right now, all we have before us is the resolution. Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, are you phoning in?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm on my laptop using.
Oh, now you're very clear, now you're very clear, okay.
Okay. Sometimes I am, sometimes I'm not, you see, I'm hearing.
Well, now you're very clear. Okay.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you so much.
It's a, the treatment of more of the critical issue that we raised, which was this, um, the, the density of the project, and our, we raised that, um, in detail, citing seconds of the code in our testimony, um, and it's a critical issue in the, in the court case, yet the, at the hearing, I think, in this resolution is getting pretty light truth.
This was.
Essentially, the resolution relies on a footnote in the district council's decision, and, um, we demonstrated on the record that was proposed even conflicts with the standard set out in council decision. We demonstrated on the record.
Mr. Mr. Smith? Okay, Mr. Smith? That, you did raise those things, this is a resolution embodying our decision, we can't change its substantive, we can't change the substance of our decision. These were our findings that the planning board made. Now, if you decide to appeal it in some way, either you need the resolution, obviously, before, before the clock starts, and then you can have, get the transcript, you can get whatever you need if you need to appeal it, but that we have to have a resolution that is consistent with the action that we took, and we can't change that substantively.
True. Okay, and I, I was close in saying that what we end up with is a, a real, a real problem when it comes to equity, because it comes down to, if the groups can do whatever they want, and do their best job of coming forward to the planning board and laying out the facts on the law, as far as, as far as a group can last obtain, and then, and then whether or not the project will afford, basically depend on whether or not the group has the wherewithal to file a legal challenge, which is a huge equity issue there.
Okay.
That said, um, I, I wish you a happy birthday, and I hope everybody and their families are staying safe.
Thank you, we hope you stay safe too, we hope everyone here stays safe because it's awfully scary. Thank you, is Mr. Rivera on the line? Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion?
Prove a Madam Chair, Dr.
Okay, Vice Chair Bailey made the motion, is there a second?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Geraldo, I'll second that motion.
To approve the resolution, okay, there's a motion to approve, okay. Is there, um, let me go down, Commissioner Washington? Okay, you're on delay again, Commissioner Washington. So, I will go to Commissioner Dooner. There you are.
I'm delayed on my screen, I'm.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair, yes, I'm here.
Oh, Mr., okay, you're on delay too, Mr. Rivera. Okay, Commissioner Washington, are you, how do you vote?
Oh, I said aye, aye, aye.
It was, it was delayed, okay. Commissioner Dooner?
Yes, I as well.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, I'm on, um, I, I.
Your real time. Okay. The ayes have it, a 5-1. Okay, so, with that, that concludes the agenda for today. I really sincerely want to thank everyone for working with us during this, and being flexible enough to work with us during this very challenging time. I ask that everyone, please stay safe, play, stay positive, be extra careful, stay, stay prayerful, um, and above all, stay hopeful. Please take good, really good care of yourselves and reach out. Um, we take, please take good, really good care of yourselves, and reach out to, not literally, but, um, reach out by telephone or to, to others, um, to make sure that those in your sphere are okay. Thank you very much, planning board is-
I got my idea, too.
Planning board is adjourned.
Have a good one, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much.
Everybody have a wonderful day.
Thank you so much.
Bye.
Good.
Mut all.
Yes. That's it.